Per usual now, we'll be conducting this meeting virtually and we'll be doing public comment like a live radio television show. And before public comment and before taking any votes, we will give a few minutes for people who are tuning in to go to the phone and to comment, call in to make a comment. If you are calling in to make a comment, a few things to take note. First of all, please mute the television or computer or however you're watching before you call in, or else there'll be an echo and we won't be able to hear you. And second, the meeting moderator will let you know when you've joined the meeting. And they'll let you know by identifying you by your phone number, when it's time for you to make a comment. And we'll be observing a limit of three minutes per person. So with that, can we please have a roll call of members?
Thank you. Andy Meford. Andy Meford's absent. Peter Benson.
Here.
Your Benson's present. Sean McCoy is absent. Dave Loomis may be joining us later. Josh Rader.
Here.
Josh Rader's present. Caroline Lauer.
Here.
Caroline Lauer's present. Niva Hassanan.
Here.
Niva Hassanan's present. Shane Morrissey.
Here.
Dean Morrissey's present. Stephanie Potts will be joining us later. Vince Caristo.
Present.
Vince Caristo's present. Mr. Chair, we have five regulars and one alternate. Would you like to appoint Mr. Morrissey as a regular voting member tonight?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the approval of the minutes from the prior two meetings on October 6th and September 29th. Planning board members have any revisions or comments at this time? I would entertain those as well as a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Okay, a motion by Caroline to approve both sets of minutes. Is there a second? Need a second to motion? All in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you for the minute staff. They were quite extensive. The next item is public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if there's anyone listening in who would like to make a comment to the planning board on any item, now would be the time. If we could get the numbers on the screen here. The instructions are dial one of the numbers on the screen such as 1-253-215-8782. The meeting ID is 9600493694. And like I said before, please mute your TV or computer and wait until you are called by the last four digits of your phone number and you will have three minutes to make your comment. So with that, I will go unmute and give a few minutes for people to call in.
Caller with phone number 4054, would you identify yourself by name, please, and make any comments?
Hello, my name is Leah Mendez. And I'm calling tonight with a few questions and concerns regarding the...
Yeah, if you could mute your television or computer, we're getting the...
Oh, sure. Sorry about that. So to continue, I'm, after reviewing the landscaping standards that are detailed in section 4.6 of the Mullen Area Draft Form Base Code, I am really wondering how this is going to be enforced. My concern is that the document simply doesn't contain the necessary ...
Yeah, if I could stop you there. It sounds, I'm sorry, it sounds like you're making a comment on the Mullen Area Master Plan.
Correct.
So if you could, just for the sake of minutes, yeah, so just so that your comment isn't sure to be included in the record for that item, if you could wait until we get to that point.
Oh, sure.
So it'll, we will let you know when it's time to make comment on that item. But right now, if you have any further comments to make on anything that's not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood that. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Heather, is there anyone currently in the waiting room that you can tell?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. So I think we've given enough time for folks to call in and we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is staff announcements. Are there any announcements from city or county staff? I'm seeing head shakes, but Karen maybe wanted to unmute her computer.
Sorry. Yeah, so this is Karen. He is with Missoula County Community and Planning Services. I just wanted to let the planning board know that I'll be sending out an updated schedule for the coming months so that you can see what your agendas look like. We have made it through the pulse of development review projects, so your schedule should go back to no more than two meetings a month, at least for a while, unless we have some scheduling snafus. And you'll see some room for either shorter agendas or, and some special presentations. There may be some opportunities for additional conversation if the board wants to pick off a topic that you've been kind of contemplating. That might be in the next couple of months, something that you can do. Around January, February, you'll start to see some more development projects that will come online. So, but for the next November and December, for sure, the agendas look pretty light, maybe even into January. Niva?
Thanks. That's good news. In the zoning for the county, when do we anticipate that piece? Not the county, but the, where we did the land use element that Jenny's been working on.
Right, yeah. We should have a better idea what the calendar for that looks like in the next couple of months. So after the first of the year, we should have a better sense of what we're looking at for that.
Okay, so probably after the holidays, that's how.
Definitely, definitely after the holidays.
Okay, great.
Yes. And because we're in COVID, we're going to have to kind of change the way we would have done outreach anyway. So it may take us long, even longer.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense. Thanks, appreciate that.
Great, thanks for the heads up, Karen. Look forward to seeing the schedule and yeah, a little bit of a lighter load in the next few months. It's been quite a few months for the planning board here. So on to the public hearings for tonight. We have one public hearing, which is a continuation from our previous meeting on September 29th, which is a public hearing on what we're calling them currently the Mullen Area Neighborhoods Master Plan and Code. So we have a presentation from both the city and the county to kick us off.
Thanks, Vince. I'll start. I'm going to share screen. I'm Andrew Hagemeier. I'm a planner with Missoula County. And we've also got Tom. Say hi, everyone, Tom.
Hi, I'm with the city. This is Tom Zavitz. I'm a planner with the city and I am sort of representing the city staff report and the city part of how all of this works. Thanks, Andrew.
And there we go. We've got a presentation. So welcome back. This is the iteration number two of the Mullen Area Neighborhoods Draft Plan and Code. Tom and I are here. Dover Coal and Partners had another engagement tonight, so they're not with us. But I think between Tom and I and all the smart brains we have on the planning board, we're going to get through this thing as far as we can. I've got a, we've got a short presentation for you tonight. We're not going to rehash the two-hour presentation that we did a couple of weeks ago. What we're going to do is we're going to focus in on a memo that was distributed earlier today to the planning board. Did anyone not receive that memo? Everyone...
Is this the piece that Donna sent us?
That is, that is what Donna sent, yep.
Yeah, I received it.
Excellent, okay. So it sounds like no one didn't receive the memo. So we're going to, we're going to kind of walk through that memo, because those were the recommended changes from Dover Coal and Tom and I to the planning board based off of the public comments that we received, that were mostly written prior to the hearing. And then we received a couple of comments at the hearing itself. And then also the planning board discussion that occurred after the, we took public comment and after the presentation. If you're interested, if the folks watching on YouTube are interested in seeing that memo, grab this link that's right down here on the bottom of the screen. It goes to the Missoula County Community and Planning Services page. And you can find the memo highlighted in orange on that page. You can see what Dover Coal put together for us. All right. I'll give you two seconds to see if you can copy and paste that in your browser, if you're interested in seeing it. All right, moving forward. So what we're going to do is we're just going to hit, and Tom, feel free to jump in anytime, we're just going to hit highlights from that memo. So we're not going to walk you through the whole thing. You've got it in front of you. You can read it if you haven't already. We're just kind of hit the high level, big picture stuff. It's organized by, in two sections, changes to the plan and changes of the code. So first, changes to the plan. We have some minor clarification in language for stormwater retention. There's a more robust description of how bus routes will be implemented as the area develops over time. There's included language, this is in the text of the plan for, to address the zero waste on those comments that we received. And there's also some strengthened implementation language for affordable housing. That talks a little bit more about, well, I don't know, Tom, you might be better, you, I think you have a better grip on what that affordable housing thing said than I did.
Right. And we, we, there was a piece that had to do with starting a trust fund, which they've actually already done. And so we, we took that out. And then we have some language that suggests exploring some kind of inclusionary zoning kind of piece.
Right.
And that was what was left. So, and we had checked that with the housing department and they thought that they were good with that, so.
Thanks, Tom. That's correct. So sticking with changes to the plan, there's language, the strengthening of language for conservation and agricultural lands preservation. And there's also some strengthened implementation language for zero waste provisions. I guess, why don't I make it through this and then we'll, we'll take questions. For changes to the code, we removed the airport reserve at the request of the airport. That's one of the neighborhood units that was on the map. We reduced the parkland requirement from 22% down to 11% based off of comments from development community. The EADA, that's that, the, where the planes are flying right over the runway there, goes almost all the way out to kind of just north of Hellgate Elementary there. So we have four dwelling units per acre in that area. But we felt like, you know, based off of comments from the airport, conversations with the planning board, there was some opportunity there to require clustering in this. So in the EADA, and allowing you to transfer that density out, you could either, you can either, you're required to cluster to try to keep open space in the EADA. Or you could transfer that density outside of the EADA and leave that EADA undeveloped or available for open space or agriculture. We also included an incentive, a density bonus for ag land preservation in the zoning. So whether you're in the EADA or outside the EADA, you could get a little bit of a density bonus if you preserved area for ag land. And that was trying to get at the planning board's conversation about trying to preserve areas for ag soils. Some minor changes to uses, including nursing homes, clarifying mini storage, things like that. There's also some design standards for zero waste facilities. So they're more online with how people normally handle trash and design. And some minor updates to language within this code to just match the city zoning language. Finally, changes to code, which are not in the memo, we received an email from Rob from Dover Coal saying that we should beef up based off of comments, beef up renewable energy language within the plan. So adding utility scale renewable energy generation as a use to the T2, T3, and the SW land use designation. So that would allow more renewable energy production. And then it defines what the utility scale energy generation means. So you haven't seen that. So I'm just going to let you read that for a second. I'm just going to hold right there. All right, moving on. We also recommending one change to the zoning map. The McKinnon property, which is the conservation easement in our, in our planning area. It was underneath the neighborhood unit, crossroads neighborhood unit, which allows six dwelling units per acre. The owners of the property, they didn't, they just, they didn't feel like that was in line with the conservation values and the conservation easement. And so what we suggested to them was to designate it the T2 transact, which is one unit per 40 acres, 20 acres, one unit per 20 acres, and is an agriculture, agricultural or open space zoning designation. And so this is much more in line with what they're doing with the property right now. They have 40 acres, they have two housing units, and they are dedicated the property to local agriculture. So they were very happy with that. So we're suggesting that that T2 land use designation be applied to the McKinnon property, the old Flynn Ranch. Right. So with that, that's our presentation for now. So we'll take questions on what staff is proposing. When it's time for you guys to start talking about motions, Tom and I have some more slides that can, we've got, it's a lot of, we're going to be a lot of complicated motions tonight with all the, with the cross jurisdiction stuff. So we'll have some more slides to help walk you through that. So at this point, questions for Tom and I.
Peter?
On your last slide, Andrew, which was the McKinnon property?
Oh, sorry. It's, yeah, I didn't tell you, did I? It's the one highlighted in black with the blue outline.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, right next to Hellgate Elementary. It's not the purple junk, sorry.
Yeah, actually, Andrew, could you point out the, what is the purple as well?
So the purple, that's, I just grabbed this screenshot off of the Missoula County Property Information System. And so when, when you get those purple crosshatches, it's because the, the owner is changing with the property. And so the Department of Revenue, it's, doesn't have any information on the property. And so what that's telling you is that it's, it's, it's not linked to the Department of Revenue's database. And what's going on with the big thing to the north that you're seeing, if you're curious, we investigated this because we were curious as well.
Yeah.
Is the Doorties are just changing the name of the LLC. They're changing the LLC that owns all their property. And so that's a name change, that's an owner change. And so right now, it's not showing up on DOR's information. And there's a little corner right here. And that, that's, that's an approved subdivision that's getting built right now. That's not the Doorties property that's being built right here. That's an Edgel subdivision.
And the McKinnon property is open space, but not public?
It is pri, yeah, it's a, it's private property, it's a conservation easement.
Right.
Yep.
Andrew, could you, what's the purpose of clustering in the EADA?
The, the idea behind that, Vince, was that hopefully what it would do, so you know, we've got this EAD, EADA, and you know, it's a, it's a set box. It's like it's a box. And the idea is that if folks could cluster maybe towards the edge of the box and leave sort of the middle of the box more open, that would be a better outcome for the planes flying over, you know, that there would be open places if, if an accident was to ever occur. So we're dispersing people a little bit more across the EADA. But really what we are trying to do is encourage people to transfer that density out of the EADA entirely. And so we gave, we have an incentive. So if they transferred their density out of the EADA entirely, that they get a little bit of a density bonus. I think it's two dwelling units per acre to do that. And another thing we did with the EADA is we, we, if you have a property that's part in the EADA and part out, we required that you put your parklands in the EADA. So we're trying to get as much open area in that EADA as we possibly can, but still allow, you know, people to be able to get some value out of it.
Great. Thanks for that explanation. That makes a lot of sense.
Great.
Andrew, I had a question. And Tom, do any of these changes, or do you foresee any changes that would allow the code to be more prescriptive in terms of open space? I know that was one of the things we discussed last time was, you know, the great thing about form-based code is it allows you to be more prescriptive and create a sense of place by focusing more on form and less on use of the built environment. But oftentimes, the unbuilt environment is just as critical in place making. And it seems like we didn't have maybe the tools in the toolbox to be as prescriptive as maybe we would like to be about where open space is, how big it needs to be, how it needs to run through, through the neighborhood. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I'll say a few things and then Tom can jump in. The, we did, we did create that incentive to allow people to create more open space within the development. And that was really geared toward ag, the prime farmland irrigation, or prime farmland if irrigated soils, to try to really incentivize some, leaving some more of that open. And then, you know, I think it's sort, it's explained in the plan, but it's not in the code that it's really sort of the hope that the city has funds to purchase some of the larger park areas ahead of time proactively. And so they are set in stone as the development, as development comes in. Of course, that's a huge, huge question, you know, a follow-up, a huge follow-up implementation step. And then, you know, I, as for the part, as for open space design, it's just, I think that's more of a Tom wheel, that's more in Tom's wheelhouse than mine.
Which, which I don't have a great answer other than, you know, that's just part of what we have left to the developer to have as some flexibility. And so they do get to put that where they think it works best with their development. And, you know, with the code overall, I think that with the block sizes and the other requirements, we'll leave them with a way of placing parks in a beneficial way to their development and hopefully the developments around them. I think the code sort of naturally does that by regulating all these different aspects at one time. It cannot guarantee where there will be one. And as Andrew said, the, you know, the best way that we can do that is to actively buy some parkland ahead of development or as it occurs. So that's the best answer that I have. And there, yeah, there was meant to be some flexibility so that the developers, you know, it's hoped that they will design an attractive place. So yeah, as much as, you know, you want to go ahead and say, hey, look at this plan they've laid out. That's, you know, kind of the, part of the, the good part for the developer is that they have that flexibility. And then hopefully the, the permit reviewers will look at that and look at the intent of, of the code and in the plan. And they'll be able to decide whether or not they can do that. So that's the best answer I have.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like you want to provide flexibility to the developers and that you're, you think the, the code will encourage proper design of open space and how it integrates into the overall planning and of the neighborhood and the community. But if you have the chance, you don't want to leave, leave that to chance. You just, you prefer to buy some space. Is that correct?
Yeah. And then the buying part, I think, has the bigger advantage of having the space be maybe bigger.
Yeah.
Than they might have. Or, you know, that works for two or three different property owners. But, so, yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Josh, in addition, back when we were going through the public outreach process in March or something, Jason King was telling Tom and I that in their experience, even though the, you know, there's that illustrative drawing in the plan that kind of shows what the vision is, that developers will try, they're not required to follow that, but oftentimes with the parkland, they try to. And so it has a weird way of, of just putting a drawing in, has a weird way of getting people to do it. So
Influencing their, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Andrew, do you? You guys anticipate having some kind of implementation committee to help advance a lot of these things that we talked about, like parkland and trails and, and whatnot. I mean, it seems like we'll take pretty significant resources and given this is multi-jurisdictional plan, there's, you know, who's going to be responsible for, I know you listed a lot of the agencies on each of the items and the implementation plans really thorough, but have you thought about a committee or group or how, what that's going to look like?
We haven't, Tom and I haven't really talked about it much, but we've got, I've gotten that question a number of times now, just in chatting with people and I could see something like that being beneficial.
Yeah, I mean, particularly with the relevant departments who would be responsible for writing grants for trails or, you know, acquiring parkland, you know, in, in their own priorities. And especially, I mean, things are going to be changing quickly, I think, you know, as properties develop and opportunities will need to be taken advantage of in an orderly way. Niva, you got your hand up.
Yeah, excuse me. Process question. Vince, are we, we're in staff presentations, but we haven't done public comment on
Thank you, Niva. Yeah, we are asking questions of staff, but we do need to have public comment first. Yeah.
Would you like to, Vince, would you like to, we can, we can come back to questions. So would you like to come back?
Yeah, I think we should do that, given, I know we've got one person who wants to give a, a comment. Great. Well, thanks, Tom and Andrew. We're going to move to public comment portion of this item. If we could have the numbers back on the screen here for people to call in. For folks who'd like to call in and make a comment, the numbers will be on the screen here shortly. When you call in, please mute your phone or television, however you're watching the meeting. And staff will let you know when it's your turn to speak by identifying you by your phone number. And when it is your turn, please identify yourself by name and then you'll have three minutes to give your comment. So with that, I will go on mute and give a few minutes for people to call in.
And our caller with phone number ending in four zero five four, if you can hear me now and there's not a delay because you're listening on a different device at the moment, you are free to give your name again and make your comments.
Hello, my name is Leah Mendez and I'm a graduate student in U M's Environmental Studies Program. A big part of what draw me to Missoula is just how much this community values its open space and public lands. And I'm just really excited about this Mullen Area Master Plan proposal. My concern, however, is that the document just doesn't contain the necessary language to ensure that the landscaping aspect of the finished product live up to the spirit of this really amazing plan. So for example, looking at section 1.4 Rules of Interpretation defines the terms may and should as being permissive. So while according to item A six of the draft codes landscaping standards, native plant perennial landscapes should replace turf grasses where possible and be very diverse. There's really no guarantee that this suggestion be adopted in the actual execution phase of the plan. And to me, that, that just doesn't seem sufficient. And I think there needs to be strengthened language to guide developers in their landscape planning, as well as a list of recommended species for planting. Similarly, item A three of the same section states that landscaping shall be designed to remain functional and attractive during all seasons. So that's an imperative, right? And yet, speaking with one cultivator of Montana native plants today, he explained to me that most perennial native plants change dramatically in appearance throughout the year. And he argued that this feature is part of what makes them really beautiful. You know, unlike a lot of cultivated plants, natives are dynamic. And so, you know, learning to appreciate them in these various stages, whether in bloom or in dormancy, is what can anchor us to a sense of place and really bring us into alignment with the rhythm of the seasons. So all of this really is, is to just ask, how will the planning board ensure that these landscaping standards of functionality and attractiveness be implemented in a way that honors this dynamic? You know, according to item A four, native species are encouraged, which is really nice, but I propose that native species be more than encouraged. So how about making mandatory a specific quota for planting native plant species in the Mullen Area community? You know, natives are believed to be among the most resilient to increased temperatures and drought. They possess greater genetic potential than cultivars, meaning they have enhanced adaptability to climate change. And so it's with, you know, the greatest respect that I bring these comments and concerns to the planning board. I have so much admiration for the thought and, and incredible vision it took to create this plan. My hope for the residents of the Mullen Area community, both people and, and pollinators, is that in practice, the plan live up to the great ideals of its creators. So thank you guys so much. I appreciate the opportunity to voice my comment.
Thank you for your comment.
We do have one other caller in the waiting room. I will admit them. Caller with phone number ending three, three, nine, one. You've been admitted to the meeting. If you would please identify yourself by name and make your comments. Caller three, three, nine, one. If you can hear me, you may be on mute, but you may make your comments now. Mr. Chair, looks like that call has dropped. We do not currently have any other callers in the lobby.
Okay, thank you, Heather. We'll just give another minute here and then move on.
That caller is back. I'm going to try to admit them again. Caller with phone number ending three, three, nine, one. You've been admitted to the meeting. You can identify yourself by name at this point and make your comments.
Hi there. I'm sorry about that. I was struggling with the technology. My name is Seamus Land. I'm also a grad student at U M in the Environmental Studies Program. I am new to the area and I'm just getting a sense of the dynamics and the people doing amazing work up here. So I want to speak from that place, but I have read through the plan and I'm really inspired by what it aspires to do. It is clearly trying to bring a lot of threads of Missoula culture and, and plans to change with the times together. And it almost seems like an intentional community in that sense. I am particularly interested in the Grant Creek restoration. I think it's imperative that we reserve space and a buffer for that project and allow for that, for the funding to emerge for that. I know a lot of people are interested in that, but the timing might not work out for the restoration to happen in line with the development. But I think it's imperative to reserve space for appropriate space over a buffer and a floodplain for that project to happen. And I think alongside that, echoing Leah's points in the previous call, that we need to take this opportunity to educate and incorporate a lot more of the relevant science, educate people on the relevant science and anticipate the changes that will occur from climate change. And I think the restoration project is a really great educational opportunity. It would allow for people to maybe take part, allow for people to see what ecological integrity and an attention to historical continuity of the place, what that looks like. And it would also potentially work really well to inform people about the differences and the spectrum from restoration and ecological integrity all the way to horticulture and landscaping. So I think we really need to be keeping that in mind and keeping that project in mind as kind of the heart of, of this whole plan. And the only way for it to work is for it to work ecologically as well as with the other human interest. So I think, I think I'll leave it there, but I would really appreciate if, if we emphasize the Grant Creek Restoration Project as a core part of the project and, and potentially see its potential for all its educational purposes. But, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So we'll give another minute or so for additional people to call in.
Thanks, Vince. This seems good. Could you had it? You started talking about some of the other stuff. It's been open for a while. So thank you.
Yeah, it was totally an oversight, Niva. Thanks for pointing it out. Heather, do you see anyone else in, in the waiting room at this point?
No, there's no one else in the waiting room.
Okay. Well, I think we'll move on to the next portion, return to questions from planning board members of the staff members who are here tonight, Andrew and Tom.
I guess I have a question. Am I the only board member who wasn't present for the first part of, the first presentation?
That's a good question, Peter. A minute.
Do you mean in July?
No, that was the end of September. Wasn't it the 21st or something of September?
Good one. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize you weren't there.
Yeah, I was just
You're the only person absent. Yep.
I don't want to, I really don't want to take the time to ask the board to give me a summary of the, this, of the, what I'm more interested in than, than, than the details is people's opinions about the different, the agenda that we have. So it would be useful for me, but the other option for me is to abstain. I don't know if we have enough votes.
Peter, I didn't catch the last or sort of the crux of what you mentioned there. What was the option? What was the other option you mentioned? But you've totally frozen on me.
Yeah, Peter, Peter's frozen up.
Peter's badly frozen in time. We'll have to wait for him to, to come back.
So if Peter doesn't feel like he's got, he's had enough of the information, background of the logic from the, including the previous hearing, then I think abstaining might be the appropriate way to go. Just usually if you missed the previous meeting, you either watch
Karen, I appreciate your input in this, but my question is for the board, not for the staff.
This is Donna. There are actually seven board members present right now, and I do expect Stephanie to join later. So there will not be a problem with quorum if that's what you're asking.
Okay. Abstain from voting.
Wait, Peter, excuse me. You have followed this for a while. We met in July. I, I mean, I don't see a need for you to abstain, but because I'm hoping we're all going to pass this, so.
Peter, I didn't catch your suggestion. You were having connection issues. If you might, others might have been
Actually, I was just curious about what folks thought about it.
I see. Okay.
So my comment, Vince, Peter, you know, we, we read up the best we can, participate. I'm kind of a newcomer to this process in the middle of the Mullen Area Plan. So I read up on the background. Hopefully reasonably well informed. The difference in, in my opinion is that this is a plan and we're recommending body anyway. And we just recommend and try to give our governing bodies helpful direction. Go this way, don't go that way. We support this. We want to add this. We want to subtract that. Our advice is, is what we're giving them and your advice would be valuable. And I'm hoping our individual and collective advice. And that's why I say move ahead.
Peter, I guess if I had to provide, you know, my perspective on it, I'm really in favor of the more prescriptive form-based code. I think it helps create a sense of place. I think it's more conducive to place making. It's less focused on use and more on form, which I think is very helpful. I think it discourages the monolithic product types and design, which results in monotonous places, uninteresting places, uninteresting spaces that don't foster connections in communities. So I don't know. I'd like to see it be a little more prescriptive in terms of open space. I think the public comment that we just received about, you know, maybe being a little bit more specific and, and prescriptive in terms of landscaping is a good observation. I think that perennial, or not just perennials, but natives, there's a lot of studies out there. They're more drought tolerant. They're, they protect better against invasive species. They're, so if there needs to be a percentage of natives, I would certainly support that. So that, you know, there's probably room for improvement, but I think they've done an excellent job. I think it's a great plan. I think it's a great evolution. And so I think it's a great evolution. And so that's my perspective.
I agree with Josh, for sure. This, this plan is, it's a huge step forward. Maybe we would like, being a plan, the next step has to do with the governing body and their staff developing, implementing ordinances. And, and this is not that kind of plan, even though this is kind of a huge step forward from an ordinary master plan, if you will. Which, you're right Josh, it talks about more use types and locations. And we're talking way more, what the, the overall form is gonna be. This is my personal opinion, there's more work to be done at the next level with, with staff and governing bodies. And we can, and we can push that forward, in my, my opinion. Hey, you need to get on developing an ordinance. In fact, to the public comment, they're, they're right, they're absolutely, so, so what are you gonna do about this proposal about the use of native plants? If you're serious, you need an implementing ordinance to move forward on.
Neva and Caroline?
Caroline, it's good. You go ahead.
Okay, to Dave's point, I was wondering if we could talk with staff about the implementation process and what that looks like. It, it does feel like with the, the may and should components of the plan, as Leah mentioned, feels like it's both up to the developer and then perhaps up to the permit reviewer to advocate for certain things. Or, I'm just wondering if you could explain more about that back and forth for the may and should components? Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you.
So, so Caroline, the, I'm trying to figure out where to start here. You know, I think that as far as, let me start with the native plant part of it. And that, I think that's a recommendation that you could make, that we make that aspect a shall, you know, or a will, that they will do that. You can certainly do that here. And as far as the implementation of this, so this is a code, just like our code that we have now. And there will be a little bit of give and take. And so part of having a form-based code depends on having a very expert permitter here. It's not black and white like a Euclidean code is. And so it is, it is up to us to make sure that we have somebody who can understand, A, how that back and forth can work, and B, what the overall intent is. And so that we are, you know, equal, you know, giving a equal review of all and not favoritism to any other. That's not what, what the flexibility is there for. It's, it's for them to get to the A, in, the intent that's laid out in the plan with the code. And they can do that in various ways, but it will always come down to here, the, the review of that, of the staff. And, you know, if we have a good person doing that, which we well intend to, and, you know, and I will say that we right now have design excellence as a, as another code here for building design, that that uses the same sort of concept. And it is not easy to get used to at first, but it does take a more, it takes some expertise. And, you know, you go with, and then the admin, the staff is doing these approvals. And it is dependent on having a good person doing that. And yeah, we could go back to specifying everything that is necessary in this area and where it should be. But that is, you know, we're trying to get away from that a little bit. And we're trying to get a little more density and well-designed density. And in giving that in exchange for getting, having more things that may need to be done here. But yes, in the end, it is a, it's kind of a give and take. And it's not a big give and take, I will say that. There's not a ton of flexibility. And as you will read it and look at some of the tables in there, there is flexibility, but there's, you know, it is, it is fairly prescriptive. And, you know, Andrew, when Andrew and I talk, he, you know, he says that a lot and I agree. It is fairly prescriptive, but there, there is flexibility. So, and, and that's just what happens with a form-based code. And, and, but however, like I said, you can suggest to us tonight, and you know, you're talking to a person who has almost every plant on my, around, on my property native, that, that that's a good suggestion and that it be required. So, you know, you will get pushback from landscapers and developers on that, you know, but down the line here. But I don't think that's a bad concept and it's certainly possible.
Thank you, that, that's helpful. That's really helpful to understand. And yeah, I trust you all will hire the right people. And yeah, it's a certain type of expertise to be able to, to work on these projects. And you have to hold many different parts of it all at once. Thank you.
Right, yeah, yep.
Any further questions for staff? At some point when we've exhausted questions, we will have, we will go back to staff to go over the list of motions that'll be needed to pass this.
Yeah, and in addition, Vince, please let me know when it's an appropriate time to discuss the name issue.
Yeah, Neva, I think, I think now would be a great time.
Oh, great.
Unless, I mean, maybe we want to give a chance for members if there's any other, I mean, we can always come back, but we're about to go-
The staff's report and their recommendations.
Yeah, just one more, a chance for members if there's any other quest, clarifications on the changes that we presented tonight. Or Peter, if you had further questions about the content of the plan, we could entertain those as well.
No, I think it's a great idea. I, I, I am, I couldn't be more supportive of this work, Andrew. I think you and the crew did an amazing job of pulling this all together. And I share your frustration that, and I believe we all share this frustration that we can, you know, you guys can put together a plan for however many thousand, is it 2,000 acres? And it is, folks find ways to get around it. You know, we had how many developers come to us in September and say, well, we got our pieces of paper in on time, so we don't have to go by the Mullen plan and we're gonna get this put in the way we want it put in. And I found that very frustrating. But I do believe that we should go ahead with the big plan anyway, even if there are workarounds that developers find to get, to somehow get their plans in there in opposition to what we try to do with this plan. I don't know. You hear some frustration from me with that.
Yeah, Peter, I think your comments are along the lines of most of ours. I mean, wanting to see this plan succeed, really kind of feeling, agreeing with the vision, which is really well laid out and agreeing with, you know, really liking the plan, but wanting to strengthen it. And so I think that's where most, most comments have been from the start. Shane, you had your hand up. You want to ask a question or have a comment?
Maybe just two real quick questions. Where we are right now, you know, Peter just mentioned the few projects that have already been approved for subdivision. Where we are in the plan right now, do we feel like we're gonna get the necessary density in this area to have the nice things that we want out here, like bus transportation and things like that? I, I seem to recall that there was a threshold of, you know, we need 6,000 units out here in order to make, you know, a mountain line service out to this area, you know, feasible. And I don't know if that's, I'm wondering like, are we tracking in the right way even with the things that have been shipped away?
Good question.
Yeah, Shane, when, when we were, you know, we knew most of these develop, these developments that you've seen recently in the past few months with the planning board, we knew those were in the pipeline during the development of the plan. And so the densities proposed in the neighborhood units and the zoning are, are fairly consistent with what, what you're seeing in these developments. There's, there's, I can't remember the name of it, just south of 44 Ranch, it's 300 some units. Does anyone remember the name of that proposal?
Harren's.
Harren's Landing. Harren's Landing is a bit, is just a hair under where we want it in terms of density. But Hellgate Meadows is right on. And I, you know, Tom, I can't remember where Remington Flats fit in, if it was in their density target or if it was a hair below.
Yeah, it's below. And, you know, that's kind of a relative thing where, I mean, what, where we all think it should be is probably gonna be different. But in order to get it to support neighborhood services, like a corner store or a, whether it be that or a transit route, it does need to get to a density up around 12 or 14 per, units per acre. So, and that is just kind of a known fact about supporting those, so.
So we, we're-
They're, they're below right now. Yeah, they, it would have been nice to have them be higher, but.
But the developments that come in after, that once this code is in place, we have minimum density requirements. So they, they won't meet the zoning if they propose something that's below.
Which is, yeah, which is a new thing too for us, yes.
Yeah, and I guess that's kind of where I was getting to. When I asked a question a few weeks ago about like, you know, what is, what is the, you know, the, there's that plan that's out there that, you know, kind of shows, it is the master plan. It's, you know, proposed vision for this neighborhood that is going to be vastly different once it's actually implemented. And I asked a question about, you know, what does this show? You know, does this show like the 6,000 people or does this show like 2,000 people? And the answer came back, this showed, you know, 6,000 units basically. That, that was the maximum density that was envisioned. And if, if we're already eroding that, I don't want to get too far away from that. You know, we, I, it feels like we do need to lock this in right now. And my only question is, is should we, I, I don't, it's probably too far gone for this, but are there ways that we can incentivize more density in areas that are yet to come to compensate for what's been lost? Not lost, but what's been planned right now? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I, and I will just, I will, let me just add in the beginning here that the, the six that, for this area is more like a minimum. It, we, it really can't get too much below that. So it doesn't have a, there's not an ability to get too much below that. And it does have room to get maybe a fair amount above that, maybe 1,000 or two more. So, but yeah, there, there is kind of a floor to this. Now the other areas, I'll let you keep discussing, yeah.
So, can I ask a second question, Vince? So I guess the next question is, is this is a new, it's a new animal. Everybody is going to be learning on the fly how to interpret this, apply this. And is there, or should there be a plan to revisit successes and failures in a couple of years or something like that? So that we can look at what's happened, look what's come before us and see if, if it's, if, if everything's going swell, great. You know, we just say, perfect, but let's keep, let's keep rolling. But, you know, should we put a timeline on this where we should revisit it?
And, and so Shane, I'm gonna, and I know Laval's on here, but one of the things we do here is we do a yearly update to our zoning codes, which is to me, one of the best things we do. And that we revisit, we revisit Title 20 every year and we take comments from developers, citizens and our own staff. And we are always looking at what we can do to improve what we have. And I assume that we will do the same thing with this. Now, if you want to do like more formal check-in point, you know, I think the council can ask us to do that. And they have on, on some other things, but we do do that to it, to this degree where it's a kind of a dynamic situation. And, and yearly we have in the city, I, wait, this year I think we had over 50 amendments to our zoning code in that update. So it's pretty wide-ranging and, but not, you know, a formal check-in point.
Yeah, I mean, I thought, I, I personally think that that was a really great process. I think a lot of really good things came through that process when I was on the board this past year. And I, I appreciated it and I, I would hope that because this is a different code, that it doesn't just fall through the cracks in some way, that it, that it is revisited with everything else. And, you know, who's, who's managing that and just making sure that there is that check-in date. I wanna maybe discuss options on how to make sure that that, it does happen.
Yeah, Shane, we'll, we'll need it, we'll need it. A date is tough because we, what we need is some development proposals to come through the process. And we might find in six months that we need to come back and tweak things after a couple, just a couple proposals. We might not get a couple proposals for a year or two and have to kind of just wait it out. I would, I would suspect within a, in about a year, I'm 100% supportive of what Tom and Laval do with a check on the zoning. And so the county would, would be super amendable to coming back and amending the zoning in a, in a time when it's appropriate and working with the city on that. And we'll, we'll come back, we should come back in five years and do a review of the plan as well. It might not be the zoning that needs to be tweaked as well. We might need to tweak the plan. So we should come back and do, do a little check-in on that in about five years.
Does that need to be, does that need to be explicitly, should we set timelines within this? Or as a part of the motion process, just to make sure that at, at the very least, there is a timeline out there and we can skip it if we need to, but, or, you know. Does that need to be a part of this process here today or do we think that we can?
We could maybe recommend some strategies in the implementation table under action, under, under Strategy Five, the decide what you want and create a clear path for getting there. That would be the perfect place to include a strategy about revisiting the plan and revisiting the code for updates that, when, when, you know, within a timeframe.
Okay. And this is probably more of a comment than a question. I guess I wanted to say that, you know, I'm personally more inclined to make things a little bit more stringent and then ask for a variance to get away from that because the variance will inevitably have to come back to us in order to approve if people are straying too far outside the lines. And it's less about staff's interpretation. And it just makes me a little bit nervous to give, you know, give all that, you know, to, to, to never see this thing again, I guess. So I guess that's maybe just a statement about making things a little bit more explicit and backing off of that through a variance process if, if need be. But that's my personal take on it.
Yeah, Shane, you will get to see, the planning board will see most, the majority of development proposals will come through the planning board. In Division Seven of the code has a process for that.
Thank you.
Right, and I, I would think they would be subdivisions, major subdivisions, and so as such, they would.
Yeah. And even if they do come back through us though, you know, like the variance process, like it would be nice to have things pointed out in a variance as opposed to just being waved through, saying that they explicitly do follow the code, even if it doesn't really meet the intent. I, I don't know.
As an example, Shane, are you think like the example that Caroline was talking about earlier about native plants? I mean, is that something?
That's exactly where I was going with that is, is that, you know, if we made that, you know, an imperative and then some, you know, native plants are definitely not my area of expertise. So I don't want to like really tread into that. Because I like, it, it feels like it might limit even like agricultural uses or like somebody wanting to grow fruit trees or things like that that are not native on their plot of land. So I personally wouldn't really go there, but that's actually where I was. That's what I was responding to is that, is that the comment from the caller and Caroline's comments.
Yeah, that makes sense. I appreciate that Shane, as a general principle, that makes a lot of sense.
I, I wanted to kind of piggyback on, on Shane's question about how the Heron's Landing and Remington Flats density may have changed. And I guess I'm interested to know, in addition, now understanding how density may have been different, how would have the physical form, placement and size of those developments changed? Based with the new form based code, you know, would blocks have been smaller? Would the bulk of buildings been different? I mean, I'm working off memory, but it seems to me that Heron's Landing had pretty diverse product types. You know, there was, seemed to be pretty good mixed uses. Remington Flats, if I recall correctly, and I may be mistaken, it just sticks out in my mind that, well, this is a transitional zone. So we can have monolithic duplex type of product here because we're achieving the density. Well, great. Okay. You're achieving or close to the density. But what about the physical form? What about creating interesting spaces? And so does the staff have any, you know, color on how these developments or how these proposals would have changed? Not only in terms of density, but in the physical form and placement of the buildings as, under the new code.
Josh, one thing that would certainly be different with Heron's Landing, and I haven't taken that close of a look at Remington Flats. But, well, I have one thing I know about here and I'll touch on one for both. So with Heron's Landing, the grid system for the roads would have certainly been different. We, the form based code requires the, the road standards are done in a perimeter. So you, they don't, in the traditional zoning code that you might see at, at the city or at the county, we have block links. And so we're not, the block, having block links doesn't necessarily facilitate connectivity of a grid system in this, as efficiently as requiring a perimeter. So with the perimeter, you're requiring that they create a square. It doesn't have to be a square. It could be in a regular shape too, but you can, it has to be a 1,500. The perimeter of the road has to be 1,500 square feet or 1,500 feet. So I would definitely think Heron's Landing would have a different grid, road network. I think it would have a, you know, a marginally better connectivity. And then with Remington Flats, what I've seen, and I don't know a ton about Remington Flats is they, they do all the driveways in the front of the house, right? With, with garages and, and I know that's a, a product type that some people prefer. That's not the preferable product or place for parking in the code. It's usually needs to be to the side of a structure. So you could still do the driveway with a, with a, with a garage, but the garage and the parking would be to the side of the structure or to the back. So I think Remington Flats would, that's in terms of the form, your, your perspective as someone on the sidewalk would, would be different. If this form based code was in place. And I don't know anything about, I don't know what Heron's Landing, if they're doing alleys or not. I can't remember. No. So you'd see that with Heron's Landing then too, probably. Another thing is you'd see a better mixture of buildings probably because the form based code requires a mixture of buildings. So.
Yeah. And I think also that the, I'm just throwing that the Heron Landing, the road designs would probably be a little less wide and they might have a little more pedestrian friendly design to them. And again, I did, you know, that, that was designed by the firm that came up with this missing middle concept. And I, you know, when I asked about why it didn't have more variety, they, they, their answer was, well, the developer was afraid that some of that might not be marketable. And I don't know whether that's true or not, but anyway, it was a good step. It was, it was a step in the right direction. And, but it, with this code, it would have been more dense and it would have been more variety in the street designs probably. And as Andrew said, the blocks probably would have been smaller and would have been a little more pedestrian friendly as far as the design went.
When we really, when we really start to see a difference with the form based code is when we start to get in the multiplex buildings, the apartments, and then especially commercial is where you, where you really see these, you know, like requirements on facades and storefronts and glazing. You don't see that as much in your, the lower intensity residential areas. So we're not, with this code, we won't get super prescriptive in, in, you know, making people have a front porch and, you know, that type of thing on just a single family home. You see the more design elements are geared towards multifamily and commercial.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks. I know that one of the reference communities that I've really liked too, and have liked for a long time is Surinby, and that's mostly a low density type of development. And they're pretty prescriptive there. I mean, even in terms of where they put mailboxes and things to foster people to come together to get their mail and you have to talk to your neighbor, you know? And I mean, just kind of some interesting stuff out there that is new. And I guess just to comment on developers and what products sell, you know, it's always easier to do what's been done. And I guess in a smaller market like Missoula, you don't have the data, you can't pull a CoStar report. You can like, you know, in a big market and say, you know, here's the different segments and I'm going to create a, a community that is going to address all these segments based on demand. And so I realize it's tough, but just the default answer that, well, we don't think that sells is, it's frustrating for me to hear, you know, I've worked in development and I don't know. So, okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
And you know, can I say this too? I'll just say, I, I've talked to the, several of the developers from this area and no one really has come out and said, we can't do that, that won't work. And they've all had a fairly extensive period of time to look at this. So I think that's not a bad sign.
That's great.
Shane, and then Eva.
Yeah, sorry. I just had a couple, I guess maybe one general question about, this is more of like an inter-agency question. You know, what takes precedent when there's a conflict between the zoning and, and for instance, another entity either in the city or the county? I guess a couple of specific things that I'm interested in. The form based code seems to indicate that using impermeable paving and things like that are, are, they would hope that people would use things like, like that, I guess. And I think that in Missoula, Missoula, it's kind of gotten away from that in a lot of ways because of the air quality district, you know? When you develop adjacent to an alley, you have to pave the alley now. And, and it's more and more, it's more hardscape at, because of these other things. And I guess another example would maybe be the street standards. Who takes precedent? Is that city public works if it, if this place gets annexed into the city? Or, or does the zoning code take precedent? And have those things really been cross checked, I guess?
So I can tell you that we, you know, we have cross checked with street designs to a point and, and the city is working on revising its Title 12, which is the specifications for streets and roads. And we have our street and road standards, you know, right now reside in our subdivision regulation. So we're kind of working toward, I think, probably a kind of unified development code eventually. But we are, we are working, you know, the, we are working on the, on the street and road infrastructure and, and how that is going to become part of the city code for streets and roads. We have, I mean, I think through our process, we've pretty much checked off all of these boxes that you've mentioned. And I think there are some like, you know, the actual review of the permits, which is, you know, we're begun to work on how we're going to do that right now. And then how does the subdivision review process work with this? And you know, we are told by Dover Coal that it can and, and we think it can, but we still have some of that work left to do. But we're, you know, and, and I like the idea of implementation committee. I think that's a, another good idea. So yeah, we're hopefully not just, you know, bringing this in and then say, you know, let's see if it flies. We're, we have an eye on a lot of things right now.
Laval, did you want to add to that or, I thought you popped up there?
Just briefly, the, the goal is to make this as transparent as, as possible. So where we know there's standards that are in the subdivision regs, there's standards that are in the form based code. The priority is this form based code. The goal and the, you know, key to the form based code is that it's comprehensive. It works together with all these components that make up, make up the place. So we, with that goal in mind, we'll be, you know, making sure that that is clear. And it may mean an administrative clarification in the sub regs. So people go to it. There's, there's ways you can look at the sub regs and it says, if there's something more specific, use that. That would be this. But there's also ways that we can add some specificity or a statement that does that as well. So some administrative clarifications that make it really clear is what we will be doing. Goal.
Yeah. And I want to add too, that, you know, this, this is new to all of the city departments. Not only you all and us, but it's in, in understanding that this is not a Euclidean type of code that's just black and white is, you know, this is going to be a, an effort to educate and work with all of these departments. Because, you know, we're bringing all of these things together instead of having all of these separate reviews. And I, you know, the intent is that we are providing some affordability through, and I'm now got janitors approaching. But we, we, you know, the idea is that this will be streamlined to review so that developers don't, aren't, you know, saddled with more regulation. We're hope, the hope is that this is, is less and easier for us to get through. That's the goal for us. And I think for everybody here is we, we have some problems to solve and affordability is, is really at the top. So hopefully we have done things to allow that to happen here.
Along those lines, are there, well, two quest, two part question along these lines. One, are there portions of this area that are in the city that will need to be rezoned? And will the portions of, in the, in the area that are in the county, are they all expected? Is it expected they'll all be annexed into the city upon development?
Yes, to the second question and no to the first, that there aren't. And we, we've asked as far as, you know, our land use designation goes to some, a developer who has, had just received a, an okay for a new land use designation and zoning. If they wanted to, us to put them into this classification, but so no new, no city lands are being rezoned or reclassified here and, or yeah, rezoned here. And they will all be county and, and probably all coming into the city.
So does that mean that they would need to be rezoned to be compliant for a building permit, for a building to occur?
Well, they, so they're in the county now and they will have this zoning on them. And then when they are annexed, they will have, they will get identical city zoning, which will be this, this form based code. Yes.
Okay, thanks. Peter.
Yeah. Good question, Vince. Thank you. My question was back to the, the landscaping issues brought this to mind. If I remember correctly, this area has some irrigation ditches and water rights. And I, sorry to ask, but what is happening with water rights as it goes through the properties now and the zoning changes?
I'm not sure, Andrew, if you were, there was, so the build grant right now is actually deal, that project is dealing with some of that. And we act, they actually sort of came across the idea that one of the landowners would abandon their rights to one of the ditches and fairly significant. That would be a pretty significant change here. And it sounded like they were willing to, to do that. And I'm sorry, I can't give you the exact name of the ditch, but that was kind of a surprise. Other than that.
Yeah. I guess what.
How the water rights would be transferred in this, in the subdivision process.
Yeah. I guess what came to mind is we think about climate change over the next 50 years. It's going to draw it. I mean, it seems reasonable to assume that what's going to happen to that property is going to dry out. And so water rights that we do have now.
Peter, you're going in and out, if you can hear me. I think we lost that train.
Okay. I'll repeat slowly.
Yeah, we lost you again.
As the weather gets hotter.
Peter, you might want to try reconnecting or something. It seems we're not able to get.
Sometimes it's okay.
Turn your camera off. If they turn the camera off and we're having connectivity problems.
That's a good idea, Andrew. Did you catch that, Peter? Turn your camera off so we can hear you. Possibly. Peter's back. Sam's camera. Peter, so there's a suggestion from Andrew to, to turn your camera off, which might improve your audio connection. So we could hear what you're saying.
I'll try. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that sounds like it could be better.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yep, I can.
Okay. The question was, as the climate gets hotter, is there a way we can preserve water rights and water usage in that area that we capture now? I don't mean storing.
It's, that's a tough one because there, water rights are a part of the private property rights bundle. So I don't, I don't know how much. So I don't, I don't know how much. They would, it would have to, if, if local government was acquiring those rights, we, we would have to be purchasing them in some manner. Or they'd be, or they could be donated. They could be donated to a conservation usement. You can donate water rights concert in that manner. And then you could keep it in the stream and that would be a beneficial use.
Yeah.
But there, there would have to be some sort of, you know, purchase or, or some, or transfer of that, of those water rights that, if, if it was going to a local governing body. I've, I've heard that, yeah. That, that there's interest in converting the surface water rights to groundwater rights in the area. I don't know what that would mean for.
Well, isn't there also a water bank in Grass Valley? It's the only one in Montana.
I don't know about that. No.
Yeah, who's the guy that took over from Peter Nielsen? Travis something?
Yeah.
He knows.
Okay, we'll talk to Travis.
Yeah, it's the only one in Montana. It's like an exchange for water rights. The other thing I remember, this is really going back, is that I believe Mr. Flynn, Mike, maybe, said at one point that he had severed the water rights for most of this land. And that, you know, he said it in the context of, oh yeah, sure, you can try to save it for farmland, but I've got all the water. This was a long time ago, so I don't really know how it applies right now, but it's interesting, we haven't really talked much about this element.
Okay, any further questions? On the details of the plan?
Well, I, and would this be a good time for me to raise the issue that I wanted to raise? Vince?
I think we're at a good point, Neva. Yeah.
Well. So I am happy to move the, the whole plan forward tonight. And I would also like to propose a motion before we vote on the motion for the plan. That we ask, let me make sure I have my wording right. A motion to recommend to the city and county governing bodies that they strip the name Mullen from the final version of the plan and that they find a more historically accurate and inclusive name in continued dialogue with the Salish Kootenai Culture Committee and CSKT. This is an issue I've mentioned a little bit as we've gone along, but John Mullen, for whom the area is named in this plan, the road, the neighborhood council, many things. He was basically a racist and that according to the person who wrote his biography. And so I am proposing, and I'm, I'll be happy to give you guys more details, but I propose that we ask the governing body to strip his name from this plan before they pass the final version and that they look for a, a different name. Mullen was someone who, you know, who built the road from Fort Benton, Montana to Walla Walla, Washington as an expedition for the US military. He was against fighting the Civil War because he didn't think that, that slavery mattered. And he fought a number of wars against native people in the West, including the Coeur d'Alene War. And so we all tend to think of him as somebody who built a road. Like when you come over from Helena, you go on the Mullen Road and so on. But that is not how native people in our community think of it. And so what I wanted to share with you really briefly. Let's see if I'm able to share. Oh, can you see the document? Okay, okay, cool. So this is a document, a memo that we want to include in the record tonight that came from Mr. Tony Inka Shola, who is the director, here's his name, the director of the Salish Kootenai Culture Committee. And he has been in, he and the tribal government have been in conversation with the county government regarding several naming issues, you know. But really at, at bottom, I think the issue is whether or not we as a community are going to have a more inclusive history and whether or not we, you know, want to more fully recognize our tribal neighbors and, you know, whose land we live on. Now, do we want to recognize them more fully in our, in our community? And so what I'm proposing is that we strip the name Mullen from this plan and that we ask the governing bodies to come up with an alternative in consultation with our Salish neighbors. If you look much online, you'll find plenty to, to inform you about this issue. And the memo here from the Culture Committee hopefully will be incorporated into our record and that we will recommend that the city and county select a different name. Now, I say, let me, I, one last thing I want to say is, you know, there's a road, there's a neighborhood council, there's a statue on Higgins that recognize Mullen. And this motion that I want to put forward isn't about those aspects per se, because those are outside of this plan. However, I don't feel comfortable voting for this plan and perpetuating the name and the legacy of this man who was clearly a racist and bigot by naming this whole area after him. And my concern is that, you know, if we put this in the code and we, you know, codify this plan, that Mullen's name will remain attached. And his name is attached to enough already, in my opinion. And so I would like to make that motion tonight and at an appropriate time. And I'll stop right there. Thanks.
Thank you, Neva.
So I would, my comment is I sup-
We lost you.
What, Neva is end.
But you're back, Peter, somewhat. We heard that you support Neva, but nothing else.
And can you hear me? Okay, I'll try and do it quickly.
Yep, you should be good to go.
I support Neva. I.
Okay, that was in and out, Peter.
Okay.
I wonder if it would help if you hung up and called back in.
I will try.
That might help.
You might call, dial the number if, if that's giving you problems. Do you want to?
Yeah, I will do that.
Might actually, yeah. Does anyone have questions for Neva or staff on what she's proposing?
I think this earlier, but we didn't get a chance to talk about it last time. And I just, it was too much to bring up at that point.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, I think it's, it was a little, kind of a surprise for me the first time I heard it, you know. But, you know, thinking about it and reflecting, you know, I think it makes a lot of sense, you know, for this plan, which is really trying to set a new direction for planning and development in, in the region. And, you know, one of the things I noticed since I moved here, you know, is the sense of history in, in Missoula and where is, is not really fully developed. We don't have many stories that we tell about this place. And I sort of noticed that early on and wondered if it had to do with, you know, maybe a sense of, maybe not a sense of pride about how, you know, white settlements came to be in this area. It's pretty recent, the history of conquest and genocide and the Indian wars and all that. So I've taken a point to, to learn about those things myself. And, you know, I think this, this plan, you know, this, what Neva's proposing, I think, could potentially encourage other folks, you know, around the whole to kind of take a look at the history of this place in a deeper way. So I'm supportive of it and I think we can make it work procedurally. Stephanie?
Yeah, I would completely 100% support that suggestion that you make, Neva. I think that it's really easy to continue doing the same things that we've always done and calling things the same names we've already always called them, especially when we're the folks who have the power to do that. And I really appreciate you bringing up the fact that we need to look at that and examine it and make a change. There's lots of other things, there's lots of other names that this place has been called. There's lots of other important people who have for centuries lived in this area. And so I also really appreciate the, the way that you phrase it of encouraging our leaders to work with tribal leaders to find a name that is appropriate for this place. Because again, it's, I, I would hope that we don't just continue to be insular in name within, you know, let's, let's ask folks who have been on this land longer than us to help understand how we should name it properly. So I really appreciate that suggestion. And I haven't said a lot tonight, but I also really appreciate the entire process. I think overall it's a good thing, but I would love to see that name changed as well.
Staff, could you comment at all on, on sort of procedurally how this could work? You know, if we're suggesting a, a name change without a name at this point? But the plan, can it go through approval?
Yeah.
Without a name or how does this work?
Well, I think, in my opinion, the, the most, the best thing for the public in being able to participate in the prob, project would be to stick with the name we have through, because there's, it's a branding thing. People know what the Mullen Plan is, but if we said the plan with no name or the plan named George, that, that could create confusion in the public and what we're, what we're trying to propose and what we're trying to adopt. It would make a logistical challenge for us in communicating. But what I envision happening is we'll work with the tribes and the cultural committees to come up with some suggestions that they approve of. And then present those at the, the council and commissioners hearing and, and then what they would do is when they adopt their resolution to, for the plan and the code, they wouldn't call it the Mullen Plan anymore. They would call it whatever the name they had, had chosen.
Vince, can I clarify?
Please.
That my motion is not, you know, about what name it should be. It's about, I don't think it should be Mullen's name. And, I mean, I don't want to, you know, read to you the entire comments from the tribe and, but, and they are going to be entered into the record. But, you know, I really, I totally support this plan. I think it is the way we need to go, not just in this area, but around Missoula. But I really don't want to vote for it with this guy's name on it. He, you know, supported the boarding schools and he was, you know, didn't think we should vote, we should fight the, you know, Civil War because slavery wasn't worth it. I mean, there were a lot of things that this guy did that most of Missoula, most Missoulians would not agree with. So I'm not saying what the name should be. It doesn't have to be Salish, doesn't have, whatever, but it, it shouldn't be his name.
That was a question that I had, Neva, as well. You know, are there going to be multiple stakeholders as part of that new naming process? I mean, I'm not that familiar with the history, but the Nez Perce were also in this area down the Bitterroot. You know, maybe they were there too. I don't know. So, you know, is it going to be a kind of a broad coalition of people or what? I mean, I'm in favor of it. I guess I just wouldn't want to default to having one. I don't know, just want a broad group of people, I guess, talking about it.
That's, thank you, Josh. My, my motion, maybe I'll just, can I just make it now and we'll just move forward?
Sure.
Yeah, so if I can find it in my documents that are open, I would like to make a motion that the planning board recommend to the city of Missoula and the county, the Board of County Commissioners, that they strip the name Mullen from the plan before passing the final version. You know, with exceptions to references to the name of the road. And that they find a more historically accurate and inclusive name in dialogue with the Salish Kootenai Culture Committee and CSKT. And maybe it's in dialogue with other people too. I, and, and, but the main thing I want to propose is that we not pass it out, you know, not create another thing that is going to have Mullen's name attached to it. So that's my motion.
This is Peter. Can you hear me?
Yes, Peter.
I will second that motion.
Could I make a friendly amendment, Neva, to add the, it might not be necessary. You can deny it if you want to keep it simple, but you know, we have the Mullen area master plan and the form-based code, which when we go over the motions, I mean, they're separate documents that are approved separately by the city council and the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, I, I just want this as sort of a standalone that says, you know, we recommend that you guys do something different on the naming here. And, you know, the other parts will just consider on, on their own. Does that seem okay, Tom or Andrew?
Yeah, we get your intent and, and we'll make sure when it's, when it's at the, at that level that the correct names are applied to both the plan and the code and, you know.
I knew you would. You're so good. You guys have got this nailed. Thank you.
Okay, discussion on the motion that's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or folks would like to make on this at this time? Okay, I think we've heard from most of the people here how we feel about it.
Call the question.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion by Neva, please say aye.
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 All, all opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Neva. All right. This is probably a good time to go over the other motions, Tom and Andrew. If maybe you could pull up your presentation again and walk us through those.
Yep, sounds good. All right, so the order that we're recommending we do this in is a slightly different than the way the, the motions are laid out in the agenda, but I think that's fine. There, because it's, they're the same motions, they're just in a little bit different order. And the reason why is because I think it makes sense to do the plan for the county and the plan for the city back to back, and then the, the code for the county and the code for the city back to back. So you're, you're not jumping around doing the plan then for the city, then the code for the city, and then coming back and do the plan for the city and the code for the city. So that, this is sort of the order we are thinking to do the master plan for the city first, which was, which would include, the motion includes master plan, growth policy map. And I think in the motion for the city, it says rescind the boundary of the Y-Mullen Plan for this area. And then do the master plan for the county, which has the same elements, the plan, the growth policy map, and amend the boundaries of the Y-Mullen Plan. And then do the Form-Based Code for the city, the Form-Based Code for the county, and then the zone change for the county. And so when we, when we start talking about changes, well, you know, when we talk about changes for the plan, we'll just do it once under the, the city and then we'll, we'll make sure that the, the right, the, the motion for the county reflects those changes as well. I don't think that will be very hard to do. And so basically, this, this order is going to be kind of roll like this. You're going to make a motion to approve or deny the, the plan. Let's start with the plan for the city. And then, you know, someone will second that emotion and then you won't vote, you'll discuss. And you'll either make changes in the plan based on motion, or we'll just list out the changes and you'll make one motion instead of a bunch of different motions, one motion, want to change these things in the plan. You'll second that. Then you vote on those changes. And then you've got to go back and you've got to then amend your original motion to say as amended. And we'll help you with that. And then you'll vote on that motion. Just basically exactly what you just did. You just did this. You, you made a motion, you discussed it, Vince suggested a change, then you voted on the, on the final thing. Although I don't think in that situation, you accepted the change. You just said, yeah, it's implied and you went forward. So you guys know how to do this. Any questions on that before we throw the first motion up?
Andrew, how do we make, maybe you've got the motion language for us, but are we referencing the changes specifically or would it be a shorthand way to reference those?
I can show you. I, I've been keeping track of what you suggested to change. There were a few things that we, you talked about changing, but then I don't think you really, no one ever after, ever concluded that we, like, we should go forward with something. So I'll, I'll kind of help you through that, is what I was thinking. What, what?
Oh, I see. Okay, I was, so the changes that, that were the content of the memo from staff, those don't need to be addressed in a motion, right?
Um, I, you'll lump it into the motion. You'll lump that, lump that memo, because maybe you don't want to make all the changes in that memo.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So this is, here, I'll, I'll go to the next slide. And so here's the, here's the, 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 the motion that came out of the staff report by a city staff for the plan. It says, be it resolved that the proposed Mullen Area Neighborhoods Master Plan be recommended to the Missoula City Council for adoption as a neighborhood plan of the, our Missoula City Growth Policy and to amend the city Missoula Future Land Use Map to Include the Mullen Area Neighborhood Master Plan Land Use Designation, Aligning the Mullen Area Neighborhoods Master Plan and to repeal the Y-Mullen West Comprehensive Area Plan for the same area. So there's a, there's a previous neighborhood plan in place called the Y-Mullen Plan. So we don't want to have two neighborhood plans stacked on each other. So what we're going to do is we're going to, we're going to adopt this Mullen Area Master Plan as a neighborhood plan, change the land use designation so it's, represents the, this neighborhood plan now. And then rescind or repeal that portion of the Y-Mullen Plan, basically like create a donut hole where, where this new plan goes in, in, in place. So that's, that's the recommended motion. Now, but you've talked about making some changes. And so you, someone would first, you know, say, I move that we do this, and then someone would second it, and then you would discuss. And when you're, when you're saying, we, when you're, you, you would maybe start with the, the memo. Do you agree with the memo or not? And if you're like, yeah, let's all agree with the memo, then we can cover some of the other changes that you've discussed tonight. And then you can make one big motion that we, that you say, like, oh, we want to accept the changes that staff outlined in the Mullen or in the memo, plus these additional changes that we discussed tonight. And then you can vote on it. And then we would come back and revisit this motion and say, be it resolved that the proposed Mullen Area Neighborhoods Plan be recommended to the Missoula City Council for adoption as amended, as a, as a neighborhood plan. We'd have to come back and amend that original, because this, this motion doesn't say we're changing the plan. And you've got to say we're changing the plan. Does that make sense?
Can you make that last point again? Was the last point, Andrew, in reference to the motion that we just passed, or?
Yeah, so you need, so you, you, you make the motion to approve, you, in discussion, you, 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 you make changes. And then we, because there's changes now, we need to amend the original motion to approve to incorporate the changes that you've identified. Just, we, we, we just decided to do it this way because it follows Robert's rules of order.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's sort of a nested loop sort of thing.
Yeah.
I, I think we've got this. You laid it out pretty well, Andrew. Thank you.
Yeah, you've done it before.
Do it!
Can we have a volunteer who would like to make this first motion?
This is our first motion, right, Andrew?
This would be, this motion is for the city of Missoula. So you're making it to the city council to adopt the plan as a neighborhood plan, amend the future land use map to a, you know, whatever the name ends up being. If it's not Mullen, let's say it's Grant Creek, Lower Grant Creek. I don't know what we're going to call it, but Lower Grant Creek Neighborhood Plan. And there'll be a Lower Grant Creek Neighborhood Plan Land Use Designation that's specifically to implement the special zoning code, right?
Yeah.
Um, and then, and then that, that boundary adjustment of the Y-Mullen Comprehensive Plan. That's what this, that's what this does. And the county has the exact same motion, essentially.
Okay. Can I, I would like to move that it be resolved that the proposed Mullen Area Neighborhood Master Plan be recommended to the Missoula City Council for adoption as, as a neighborhood plan of the, of the, our Missoula, Missoula City Growth Policy and to amend the city of Missoula Future Land Use Map to Include the Mullen Area Neighborhood Master Plan Land Use Designation, Aligning with the Mullen Area Neighborhoods Master Plan and to repeal the Y-Mullen West Comprehensive Area Plan for the same area. And recommend that the change-
That's not a part of your motion, I'm sorry. The recommended changes to the planet, that's not a part of this.
Negative.
But you got a purpose, Neva.
It's option area. Okay.
Thank you, Neva. That was well read. And Shane, was that you? Great. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. At this point, for the larger motion, at this point, we will be entertaining discussion, which should include recommended changes. So we will have to make a motion to approve either all or some of the changes that were outlined by staff. And then in addition, there were some of us, there were some different suggestions that were made by folks tonight to, if you'd like to make an amendment to the plan on native plants or anything else, this would be the time to make that amendment. Or to propose that amendment, and we would vote on it separately.
So are you seeing my, when I minimize that, my whole screen changed, but, so I don't, are you seeing this Word document now? You should be.
Yep.
Um, so here's, here are the things that I heard you talk about, that there were definite clear outcomes. One was, well, one is the change that you didn't talk about, where we're suggesting the changes outlined, staff's recommending you adopt the changes outlined in the memo to the plan. You talked about including an implementation step for reviewing the plan and the code for updates. You talked about including an implementation step for the creation of the Plan Implementation Committee. There was a direction to talk to Travis Ross about water rights banking. Those are all plan-related things. So these three things right here that you talked about, and then the, the motion that you've already approved to, to change the name. There was one that you didn't come to a conclusion to, but that was code-related. And that was about the, the landscaping standards and requiring or not requiring native species or a percentage of native species. So those were the things that I heard. So there could be a lot more. And this is the time to talk about them.
Thank you, Andrew. That, that is inclusive of, of my list as well. And I appreciate the clarification on the landscaping discussion, which is more appropriate for the code approval, which we'll do later. So, Peter, did I hear you on the phone trying to get a word in there?
Uh, no, thanks. I was trying to mute.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
We can. I think you're loud and clear if at any point you do want to make a call.
People have tried to mute me many times.
Okay, so I, I thought the changes that were recommended by staff were good. I mean, I, I would personally approve them as presented by staff. Did folks have different comments or ideas on that? Or would you like to make a motion on the changes proposed by staff? For me, they did a great job responding to a lot of the discussions on, on the topic. It's always of interest, particular interest to me in transportation. They made a significant number of changes to align the transit plan and the transportation plan, I think, with the reality of mountain land service. And I think that was good. I talked over someone. Was that Dave or someone else?
It was me. I was, I was going to make the motion to adopt this. If we could just see the motion, I would move, move it.
Great.
Uh, I move that we proceed with the recommended changes to the plan as outlined in the memo dated 10/2020.
Thank you, Shane. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Josh seconds the motion. Okay. Any comments or discussion on the motion before we call a vote? Okay. All in favor of the motion on the changes, please say aye.
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 All of, okay. All opposed? Okay. The motion to accept the changes from staff as presented in their memo is approved. And so we're back to the discussion on the original motion. And this would be the time, if there are, anyone would like to propose any changes?
Vince, sorry, Vince, I was trying to stop you. I was on mute. Um, these things that we discussed tonight, highlighted in yellow, I don't think we captured those because they weren't a part of the staff memo. So maybe a second motion, if you want to include these into the plan as well.
Yeah, thanks, Andrew. I think that's the process. If that wasn't understood, that was my understanding. But if, so if anyone, Dave or otherwise, would like to make a suggestion of one of the changes that are highlighted on the screen or something else, if you, Dave?
A comment, a comment?
Yeah.
Is that I appreciate staff going into the, the updates, the review, the committee reviews for future, how to do it later. The other thing in the, in the, I, I just have to put in, the, our changes outlined in the previous memo, we've already proved them. And I appreciate that, dealing with agricultural issues, because that we, that's been on the table as far as I'm concerned in the past. So given that, I'd recommend that we approve, include these three, three areas of amendments to our main motion.
Thanks, Dave. I mean, I, I brought up, yeah, I like the discussion on implementation here. I mean, that's been my, my biggest issue thinking about this the last couple of meetings, like, how can we ensure that this plan succeeds in what it sets out to do? Because we are going to, you know, increase allowable density and there's not as much commitment in the plan or assurance that some of the pieces will happen that are really important to it. So I would be in favor if someone wanted to recommend, the way Andrew's suggesting it here is adding, if I understand it right, adding a step in the last chapter of the plan, which covers implementation, a bunch of different steps. So adding a step at the end to, yeah, thanks for pulling that up here, Andrew, to either recommend creating an implementation committee and/or a regular review of the code.
I like the implementation committee.
Great.
Yeah, we would, we would add those to this right here, this decide what you want and create a clear path for getting there. So there's right now, create a consistent, predictable development process. So there would be an action, you know, 1.12 and an action 1.13, basically, or 5.12, 5.13.
Yeah, I could see this, a committee being even something, you know, that a planning board member could serve on, potentially. It's a process that's worked well with the downtown master plan to help the successful implementation of that. Neva?
Aren't we kind of the implementation committee? I mean, they'll, these, a lot of these projects will still come through us, right?
Yeah, I think in a lot of ways, you would be, and in other ways, you wouldn't be. I mean, there were, there are things like, that I think are going to be big implement, big challenging implementation steps, like the restoration of Grant Creek.
Yeah.
Maybe wouldn't function best under the planning board. We would, it would be more of a mixture of staff and maybe a member of the planning board in that, in that respect, you know?
Well, and some community groups, for sure.
Yeah, community, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I was thinking, I mean, it's probably my perspective, but from the staff level, you know, we talked tonight about the need to acquire parkland. And last, last meeting, talked a lot about trails and transportation improvements. And if those things are going to happen, you know, it's helpful to have a structure, a regular structure to bring people together and just make sure it happens.
Do we need to set a timeline on when the implementation committee would get formed? Or do we just need to say that we will- Or do we just need to say that we would wish that a, that an implementation committee would be created?
My recommendation would be an immediate step. We would want to form it right away.
Can you say that again, Andrew?
I was recommending that this timeframe would be immediate.
Okay.
Andrew, would you recommend, so, I mean, if we're adding to the plan here, there's also a column for the lead agency. Would you recommend it be city, county?
Yeah.
I might butcher this, but maybe I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Shane.
Oh, Laval has something.
Laval?
Um. The steps in, the recommendations in this plan, they're gonna, they're gonna take a little bit of time. And when you think about the fact that there are some other plans that have, or at least one other plan that I know that has an implementation committee, it can work really well. But it's going to take some time to, to, to put the people together at a, at a table. And I think that when that works best is when there is the, you have more, some resident people participating, or, you know, some of the owners from the neighborhood area participating, not just agencies and, and resources that are looking for it. So I think, give us some flexibility for filling this out to some degree, and give us some time to put it together. If that makes, does that make sense? I mean, you really want, when, when you have ownership in implementation, people really engaged in it, it needs to be a kind of like a cross-sector, if you will, private and, and public. And, you know, I think we can get there, but it needs, it definitely needs time to be able to build that out.
Are you recommending potentially that this is a near-term timeframe as opposed to an immediate?
Oh, is there a, what are your options? If there's a near term, I probably would.
Near term, yeah.
Yeah.
Could be ongoing, too. It's not something that's done and then achieved, right? I mean, we want it to be.
Yeah. Well, and I think this ongoing is referring to it's already in place ongoing. But as an action item goes with a, a near term, it gives you a chance to, to build the relationships and the sectors to participate together.
No, I really appreciate the comment, Laval. I mean, thinking back to the example that I raised with the downtown master plan. I mean, part of its success, I think, is the fact that it's, ultimately, that process is led by a, a private organization, the Downtown Association. So that's a good, good point. Shane, would you like to amend your motion?
Uh, well, I, I make a motion that we add action 5.1.2 to create a, um, what are we calling this? A, an advisory committee or an implementation committee in the near term and ongoing, with a lead agency being the city and the county.
Great. I think that captures it. Is there a second on Shane's motion?
Seconded.
All seconded. I think I heard Caroline first. I didn't see you, but, is that your voice, Caroline?
It was, yeah.
Great, okay, now I have everyone in view. Okay, motion is made by Shane, seconded by Caroline. Anyone want to make a comment before we call a vote on this?
I do want to make a comment, Vince.
Thanks, Dave.
That, um, yes, I support this entirely in that I think the planning board is in a unique situation. We're dealing with a certain geographic area now. And up till now, primarily, it's, it's residents and owners and developers. I believe the planning board has a broader perspective of the whole county. And that's why our role in that is important, just I want to add that. Thank you.
Yeah, this is important to me. I mean, I think you throw along the lines of the comments I've made before. I mean, just as a signal that, for me, that the planning board wants to see this plan be implemented and succeed. So I'm in support of it. Okay, so all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed? None opposed, okay, that motion passes. So we're back out in the realm of the original motion, which has been made and seconded. We're in discussion, and the field is open for any further changes to the original motion on the, we're still in the city, I believe.
Andrew, would you mind going back to your Word document, please? Thank you. I make a motion that we add strategy action 5.1.3 to review the plan and the code for updates yearly for the first five years. Lead agency of city, county timeframe is immediate, near term and ongoing.
We'll go with ongoing.
Perfect.
I second.
Okay, motion is made by Shane, seconded by Niva. Any comments? Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign? Okay. This motion passes. Okay, um, so if there are no other changes, we've made now several changes to the original motion. And if there aren't any, we can call a vote on the original motion. So is anyone contemplating, you know, thinking about suggesting any, any other changes? Okay, so with that, would anyone like to make a comment on things before we call a vote? It looks.
Yes, I would like to make one final comment and.
Thanks, Niva.
And I'd like to thank Andrew and Tom, Karen, Laval, the folks at Dover Call, Rob and Jason, Jason Rice as well. This has been a really fine example of, of planning and what I think it can do for our community. And so I think we're all invested in implementation of it. And sure appreciate everyone's hard work. And you guys are like amazing professionals. And I really appreciate your commitment to the community and your skill. So thank you, and I'm happy to vote for this once and for all.
Yeah, I would echo that, Niva. Great work. It's a little bit weird, but it just popped into my mind. It's like, one of the results of excellent planning and implementation is likely more growth. So I don't know. Anyway, just.
You're so right. That's the, ah, this is the challenge. You make a place nice to live, people want to move here. And so we're having to deal with that. Like, how do you manage both things? And so I'm totally with you, Josh. I wish we could have easy answers to that. But one of the answers is this plan, you know, is to like direct growth into certain areas. I, I'm sorry, it did go off, but.
That's the difference. We've got plenty of unplanned growth. We're going to try to revise and do planned growth in the future. And the chances of, of success in this plan will know soon. And I have total confidence this plan can be done. Yeah, good job, guys.
Wonderful, yeah, absolutely, well-deserved commendation on all, on all parts. Okay, so all in favor of the original motion to recommend the Mullen Area Plan?
Vince, someone has to move to amend the original motion. I think it might.
I thought Niva did, but I don't have a second.
Okay, thank you, Donna.
You mean?
Okay, so you, you made the motion, so.
The very. This motion, Donna? Yeah, I thought, didn't Niva just make the motion that's on the screen that as amended? I thought so, so I need a second.
Dave's nodding yes.
Sure, why not?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, thanks, Shane. Okay, so all in favor of the motion as amended? Please say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, motion passes. Lovely.
Thank you, guys, for your hard work. This is really detailed, hard work. I, I, I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Niva. We've got a little bit more work to do.
Not done yet.
And luckily.
Okay.
We don't have to, we don't have to repeat ourselves. So this, for the county, this can be the original motion. We don't have to go in and change the plan again, because you already did that. We can just do this once. We don't have to do it like we did, you know, you could just do it this way. So ignore this, this is junk. You already did that.
So a motion, so I would call for a motion, the, the motion that Andrew has on the screen, which would be to adopt the plan as amended, as we just amended, three separate times for adoption by the County Board of Commissioners. So if someone could please make that motion by reading the words on the screen.
All right, I'll do it. I move that be it resolved that the proposed Mullen Area Neighborhoods Master Plan be recommended as amended to the Board of County Commissioners for adoption as an area of the Missoula County growth policy, Missoula County Land Use Map, map 18, be amended to include the Mullen, Mullen Area Neighborhoods Master Plan Land Use Designation, and the boundaries of the wide Mullen Comprehensive Area Plan be amended based on the findings and conclusions contained in the staff report.
Very nice, Shane, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Dave, seconded the motion, okay. Comment on the motion before we call a vote. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
All right, so now we're onto the code for the city. So this is, this is the text of the zoning. Um, it's not the map. So you're approving that as an ordinance in the city. And this would be the motion and highlighted in yellow. And we recommend changes as outlined in the memo. And actually, there's one additional change that's not in the memo. These that we talked about earlier. So I'm going to, I'm going to bring these down, because I think this will just keep this.
Can you blow it up, Andrew? Sorry, I'm really having to smoosh my nose against the thing to see it.
Yeah, give me one second. I won't be able to edit it when it's blown up, but I can come back.
Oh, yeah, good point.
That, that's okay, we can, we can, I want you to be able to see it. So highlighted in yellow is the, what, what staff recommends as a motion for the code. Um, and then below that are the, the, um, oops, the recommended changes. Why don't, actually, we just, like, here, I got a better idea. We're making this up as we go, but this is, this is the way to do it. I'm going to cut this out, so we're just looking at the memo. Or we're just looking at the motion right now. And then I will.
So this is the first step.
To amend, I will bring those up.
Okay, so we'll follow the same pattern that we did for the previous one. So if, we could have a motion from a planning board member that's shown on the screen, that'll get started here.
I move that we recommend the Missoula City Council approve an ordinance that establishes the Mullen Traditional Neighborhood Development Form-Based Code.
Hey, thank you, Shane. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, seconded, wonderful. Okay, so now we're, we're on to discussion on the motion, and this would be the time to recommend changes as Andrew's been outlining for us. And. Andrew, could these be taken all as one? Like, one single motion to recommend the changes outlined in the memo and in addition to add these two bullet points?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. The, the one that you haven't resolved, so maybe start with this, is the, the landscaping standards. Have a discussion about whether you want to include native plants in the landscaping standards.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I have a, just a comment on that, since I had spoken about it earlier. I am not an expert on native plants. When Shane brought up, you know, how it could limit planting a fruit tree or something like that, I, I think that it is beyond my level of expertise as well. And I kind of keyed in on it for the points we talked about before about review and the, the things that we've already added in the prior resolutions. But I guess I'd, I'd like to ask the other planning board members if they feel like that conversation has been captured in our previous amendments that we've just approved.
You know, I'm not an expert either, Caroline, but I would like to see some minimal, I, I don't know if it's a percentage of plants or a percentage of landscaping that is required to be, to be native. I'm a, you know, a big proponent, too, of edible landscaping, things like that, that don't necessarily have to be native. So I don't know that I'd want to see everything having to be native, but some, some requirement to include a percentage of, of native plants. And, you know, I'm not the expert to say what that is, for sure.
I like the idea of a percentage to provide some flexibility, though. I, yeah, I think that's good.
Do you have an opinion? I mean, is there, could you at all outline pros and cons of this? I mean, I guess we've heard already tonight that, yeah, Caroline mentioned that, you know, potentially there are some drawbacks to this. But, I mean, will it raise costs for developers or otherwise make development more difficult?
Vince, I'm sorry, who, were you asking, staff?
Sort of, I, I was intending staff, but it sounded like Josh might have some input, too. As a developer, that'd be totally welcome.
Definitely start with the planning board and I.
You know, I was just going to say, you know, generally, they require less water. They're more suited to the soil types. So. They're better for pollination. Those are some of the pros. I think, you know, I'm not sure about cost of the actual plant. I think cost of maintenance and watering going forward is less. But again, you know, I'm not an, I'm not a botanist, I'm not an expert.
Well, I think, this is Peter. I guess I am a botanist. The, one of the benefits of native plants is they're xeric. They, they're dry, they, they don't require as much water as grasses. I mean, the lawns or roses or, you know, flower beds. So they use less of the resource. They're hard. So they use less of the resource. They're harder here. Um, but I guess the, on the opposite side of the spectrum is it's sort of, you know, native plants depend on uh, you know, how far back you go and what the climate was, you know, what you a hundred years ago. And, you know, native plants change as the weather and the climate changes around them and the microclimates. So you can get caught in that in the weeds, you know, with pun intended. I, I, I support this idea of having uh, you know, uh, an amount or a percentage of plants that are native plants and that we, we all agree vaguely on what that means.
That'd be enough staff to do that, to um recommend a percentage and have, you know, if if the Board of Commissioners agreed, I mean, I guess I rephrased my original, would you be supportive of of something like this along these lines?
You know, yeah, yeah, and we could ask our consultant or or any other experts for some advice on, you know, what a percentage would be for uh this kind of code in this area. So we could follow up with that kind of um, research also, so.
Yeah, we, that's what I would wanna check in. And my concern is that there aren't suppliers that could provide the volume necessarily necessary for the development, developers, because they sometimes have to put in a high volume plants. So that's, that was a concern. The second thing is, uh, when we, like, how native do we wanna get? What, what, you know, that interpretation, you know, like I have Knick Knick in my yard that's not native Knick Knick. It's from Maine. Is that native enough? I don't know. Um, so that, you know, because some of the more prevalent plants that would achieve the goals aren't necessarily native like that, the varieties of Knick Knick that I'm pointing out that are from Maine and not from Montana. So those are, those are two questions. Um, but that's stuff we could look into and figure out. We try to figure out, you know, narrow down, like Tom said, work with a consultant, maybe talk to suppliers.
I, I think the objective is, is when you're walking through the community, you feel like you're in Western Montana and not somewhere else, you know, you're trying to create a sense of place and have it make sense.
So, you know, and that could be part of the language too, that that it, that it does, you know, provide a certain amount of character. So that's, that, that sounds good.
I really like the idea in theory, and I mean, if staff can figure out the details of, you know, acceptable plants and percentage later, I feel a lot more comfortable supporting something like that, because I I'm, as been said many times tonight, but I'm not a plant expert either, so.
I guess while we're in the landscaping realm, um, I, I, I'm in total agreement with what was just discussed. I guess another thing that I kinda keyed in on um with uh one of the commenters was point three under the landscaping standards, which was mentioned. Landscaping shall be designed to remain functional and attractive during all seasons through a thoughtful selection of plant varieties. And um do we need that? Is that, is that necessary? You know, is a, is a tree that loses its leaves attractive in the winter? Uh, you know, are we, and I, I don't have the answer, uh, but it feels like it's um it might just lead to a whole bunch of evergreen trees.
Great, great point Shane.
So uh I'm wondering if we just strike that or if we amend that? Not sure. Sorry, it's section of four point six A.
Kinda seems to be at odds with my limited understanding of native, native plants, right, that what native plant is. I guess it comes down to the definition of attractive and functional, but there's not too much that that would really function that way other than trees in the wintertime, right?
Yeah, it's, it's that point three there. I'm not, I, I don't know. It it feels out of place to me, but I'm open to other comments.
Any comments on this? I tend to agree with Shane personally.
Yeah, Vincent, I don't know if there's somebody else waiting to make a comment. I would share the same um I guess confusion. I'm a person who really loves the look of willows when they're yellow in the wintertime and don't have any leaves on them. So I would call a, a willow or a box elder that doesn't have any leaves on it attractive and functional in the winter. And I'm sure that my neighbors don't think that my willows are as attractive in the winter as I do. So I guess it's that, you know, what is attractive, what is not? Um, I love the idea of encouraging use of plants that are resistant to drought, plants that are resistant to needing a lot of herbicides, a lot of pesticides, um, and just generally encouraging, I mean, honestly, encouraging native species is a good way to go, because otherwise we're gonna, we could potentially end up with a bunch of just grass lawns. And I would much rather see pine trees everywhere than a bunch of like Kentucky bluegrass. Um, but I don't know, I I, that whole, like, what is, what is attractive and what is not, it seems, I agree, it seems really subjective. And prescriptive, you know? I think that gets you into the whole, like, well, I think that grass is attractive in the winter and we can all agree on that. And then we end up with a bunch of Kentucky bluegrass, which that makes me more worried than letting people have deciduous trees.
Zach, could you comment on the, on the, there must be a purpose and intent behind this. I mean, is this, it, it looks kinda like one of these sort of anodyne statements that might be found in most plans and has a some logic behind it that maybe we're not bringing to the surface here?
You know, I was trying to think about that. We didn't necessarily walk through every line of the code with the consultants, figure out what their intent was, so. I, what I'm thinking is um, do what you want with it, uh, because we're not entirely clear on the intent. So if it sound, you know, what I'm hearing right now is maybe you're, you're thinking about striking it. I would say go with your gut as a board, um, because we can talk to the consultant and uh see if they're, what their intent was. And if, if if they're like, oh my God, no, that, the the purpose of this is to do X, Y, and Z, and it's super important, we'll, we'll bring that up at the hearing with the the governing body. Yeah, my gut is, I'm just looking at this, and I I don't think it's gonna, they're gonna freak out about it being struck.
And and I would, I would agree with that, although I would say that, you know, the overall purpose of the code is to create a certain kind of place that's attractive to live and not just, for instance, uh, an apartment building. And then there are some landscaping standards that tell you how many shrubs. And I I agree, though, that um when you say attractive, then all of a sudden that's hard to regulate, first of all. But, you know, the intent there is, you know, that we're trying to get at something that is uh, attractive and a good place to be, and that's what the Form-Based Code does. But I I do see that, you know, attractive through all seasons can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people. And, and I, I, as I was just reminded, our, I'm sure our permitting staff would be probably happy to see that go, so. Um, and and I don't think that Dover Coal would be that upset about it.
I mean, maybe, uh, maybe you just hit on this, uh, hit the nail on the head right there, Tom. Uh, what if we were uh, as a proposal just to strike the term uh during all seasons?
Yeah, I have a question. What does functional mean as well? I mean, are we attempting to recreate some type of a functioning ecosystem here? Even on a very small level? I I mean, I don't know, right? What?
I mean, I, I, maybe that's a question for staff, but like, I, I, I like the term functional in this uh, in this statement here, because I think functional can be functional for shade. I think functional can be functional for uh creating food. I think functional can be a, a, a variety of things. Um, and uh, it seems like a good word there. My two cents.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, that, you know, definition of what functional can be, that that's helpful.
Vince, I have a, I have a question, uh, probably for staff about, um, I, I don't see it here, but maybe the intent is here about, okay, who maintains landscaping once it's installed? And I think there ought to be language about what private property owner's responsibility is and the public spaces. Because we've had a real problem in this town, for instance, on street trees and privately or non-maintained uh landscaping, once it's put into place, it has to be it, you know, has to be irrigated to a certain degree, even for native plants for the first few years need that. I'm, are we finding it? I'm not. Anyway, what I'm looking for is, uh, I think the city especially is way behind the ball. Uh, from personal experiences, watering a street tree in front of uh a certain business and keeping it thriving in those plantings versus the city, uh, the other street trees dying off and not getting maintenance passed the first year or two. Am I raising something that's beyond what this is going on here? Because I don't want it to continue in the city. And this code is a place where we can say who's responsible for what.
So, hey, Dave, this is Tom, and I, I, I agree with you. And I think that, that if we say something about um, a plan for, you know, maintenance. Um, and that, you know, that the homeowner association, which, you know, I'm pretty sure all of this development will be, will have homeowner, homeowner associations that, that, um, you know, there is a plan for maintaining or maintenance of landscaping and as you know, I don't think the city has the resources to do that, but I think that.
They've shown that.
That that plan shows up in a homeowner association agreement, right?
Somewhere. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Tom, are you suggesting a, that would be a uh, an acceptable amendment? Is that what you're saying? Or?
Yeah, yeah, I think that we would, we would s- say that the, that there should be a maintenance uh piece to this and that a maintenance plan uh is required, you know, uh in the development agreement somewhere and that, you know, that could wind up, that should wind up in a homeowner association agreement. So something like as basic as that would
Okay.
I think would get us there.
Great. Shane, I liked your suggestion to to strike the all seasons. It, it, looking at the sentence deeply, that's the most concerning part of that sentence for me. It, um, maybe it's even a, you know, a Florida thing, potentially. I don't know. Um, so I'd support that. I mean, it, it raises a question for me. Of staff, I mean, what we're kinda getting at here with these items three and four, i- is there a list of acceptable plant species? Do we have, do we have that? Or do, you know, we just kind of recommend categories of acceptable species?
I think the city has a list of accessible, acceptable street trees, but um, there was some, there was, I think, actually Leah that called in, that was a graduate student. Um, we had had a conversation, I don't know if they were going forward with it, but um, to create a list of true species that would, at least native species that would be acceptable for this area. So I don't, I don't know if that's happening or not, but um yeah, I don't think we have a comprehensive list. Tom, do you know if the city has a comprehensive list for landscaping besides street trees?
No, and you know, I, I think that they, you know, I've seen lists before in some of our other plans. And and I bet you there's one in the parks department's plan. I bet you there is. But, you know, and as far as street trees go, you know, those are non-native. And, you know, that's another thing here, but uh they do have a list, but I, you know, I don't know that any are on that list are native trees, but um um, I think that they do have a native plant list or a native plant list for parks. I do think they have that, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that would seem, uh, just like a comment, I guess, but that would seem to solve this, this problem. Uh, Stephanie and then Caroline.
Um, I actually would respectfully disagree with you guys on that. I think that the problem language in point three is actually, again, the functional and attractive rather than the year round. Um, again, those are both super subjective, like my, uh, like I, I personally, and and okay, I'll give you a great example. There's a dead swamp locust street tree right in front of my house. The city planted it three years ago. They didn't water it. We tried to water it. It's not in the right spot. It's a swamp locust. It shouldn't be living where it's living. Um, I love it. It's a great perch for the goldfinches that come to my yard and the other birds, and they come and they sit on the dead tree. And it's very functional for those birds that then get water out of my bird bath and eat from the sunflowers in my yard. I'm sure that my neighbors don't think that it's an attractive or functional tree there. Um, I'm just leaving it there till the city comes and takes it out and plants a different tree. But I think that that gets down to a thing of like, anything can be a function to the homeowner that likes that function. Anything can be attractive to the person who likes that. What I like about number four in this general standards is that it says native plants are encouraged. It, it allows you to be place-based, but it doesn't say we're gonna prescribe a list of the only native plants you can plant there, or we're gonna say, um, you know, it has to be attractive or it has to be functional. I honestly think that by getting rid of three, you, you still accomplish everything within that, um, by encouraging the thoughtful design, by encouraging the, the, all the, I guess I just think all the other, the points there get at what you're getting at without having the city staff or county staff or anybody else have to make these subjective judgments about what is an attractive plant, what is a functional piece of landscaping? Because in a mixed-use community, like a garden of, you know, again, a native plant garden might be really functional for pollinators, a um, a vegetable garden might be really functional for growing food and not have any native plants in it. And it might be really messy during some of the year, and that's gonna benefit them. I mean, there's, it's just, it's really messy, um, and people, you know, good fences make good neighbors and bad, the landscaping decisions and subjectivity can cause problems. I would just recommend that we strike it completely.
Yeah, point taken, Stephanie. I mean, um, we're definitely, yeah, diving into this sentence a lot, which is good. I mean, but I, I think may, it might be helpful for staff to remind us all of what this governs, you know, I mean, in my mind, you know, these, these guidelines kinda give staff the ability. So first of all, this is governing public space, right? Not individual homes. This is public space in a subdivision, right? And and sort of giving staff the ability to veto, you plans that are, you know, far beyond the generally accepted ideas of, you know, attractiveness, attractiveness and functional, you know, if someone comes out with a crazy idea, because they got like a good deal on some particular kind of tree that's totally absurd, the, the, they could say no, you know, it's gotta, right? Is it, can you, can you fill that in stat for us? Kind of how, what, what, what this is getting at, like what it would cover?
Didn't Tom just say most future, maybe all future development in this plan area is going to be private? So you need to deal with homeowners and other entities not public. So the only public, uh, what I'm hearing anyway, what the only public are the actual streets. And any street trees planted will be privately maintained. Okay, that's what I thought heard.
That's my understanding. Street trees and parks, basically.
If it's a public park, but there's gonna be lots of um common areas, private common areas. If it's a public park, but there's going to be lots of, um, common areas, private common areas.
Okay. Yes, that's right, Dave.
Also affects the commercial areas too.
Ah, commercial, okay.
Yeah. I, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not clear as day, is it? Like, is this, like, does this regulate backyards and things like that? And I don't think so, because right here it talks about coordinating that public and private realm. So, you know, I think this is, this is um, affecting those. You know.
Would it affect a multifamily complex, like, are landscaping standards applied when you have like an apartment complex or?
I, I think it, I think that's more of the intent, but that's a great question that we should take to Dover call if it's how far do these landscape standards go into, say, a single-family residents, you know, and then there, is it regulating their front yard? Um, because I, I'm not, you know, I, I'm reading it now and I'm not, I hadn't thought about it in that way before, and now I'm starting to wonder.
Yeah, I mean, Dave, was that your intention kind of with the discussion on a, a homeowner's, uh, association covenant to kind of apply these standards to private?
Yes, it's not clear, um. Who does this apply to? That's there, there might be separate, separate standards, if you will, from public spaces to private spaces. Uh, and, and with good reason, because there's certain limits on the private spaces. What you might want to do, like not fooling around with private yards, but an apartment complexes in the past, the cities had a lot of standards about, um, planting, you know, landscape standards in larger projects of X, whatever you, you, you choose. Anything larger, and you pick a number, has to, has to adhere to these standards. Single-family houses traditionally haven't. And I think just, we just need more definition going forward to, uh, the, uh, governing bodies.
Okay. So, I thought we had, you know, three areas of discussion on this, uh, on the landscaping topic. One was we started talking about native plants and potentially amending, uh, the code to recommend maybe a percentage of native plants that would be, be required, uh, to be established by staff later. And then we had discussion on points three and four, and we didn't resolve sort of what the direction the, the group would like to go on, uh, revising the language, uh, language around, uh, items three and four. Um, and then we have the uh, discussion around, uh, where these apply and whether to potentially recommend an amendment to acquire, um, used to apply to, to private residences through a homeowner's association of some kind. So, um, I would say, I, you know, I, I think on the first one, it seemed like we, we had some, we'd kind of come to a resolution, uh, on something that would work for staff, at least in my mind, is that right? To, does that seem right to everyone else? Okay. Caroline, would you be willing to maybe work on with, with us here, um, uh, uh, on a motion to move that forward?
Yeah, um, okay, so. Where would? Would that be adding a point, um, in the native speci- like specifying an A four that native species should be a certain percentage? Is that the best place to include it?
I think we can be general. It sounded like staff would be willing to take the recommendation from planning board and turn it into specific code language. But I guess, yeah, that's a question for them. Like, how specific would you want this recommendation or amendment to the, the motion to be Andrew and Tom? So let's recommend a place in the code or? Um, uh, you're muted.
Tom's muted, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that. I, but I'm not seeing a problem with that. Andrew, with?
Yeah, figuring out a place to go. I, I think it, that, that point four, now, now I forget the number, but let's go back. Yeah. I think that's a really logic, well, that's not the right code. I think this four is a really logical place for it.
I will, uh, take a first stab at that motion then. Is that okay, Vince? Is that where you wanted to go?
Yeah, please.
Okay, all right, so I move that, um, staff consider appropriate percentage or appropriate percentage of native species, um, as a minimum in section, um, four point six A four. Is that okay?
That's wonderful. Yeah, that, that, I think that's, that's great. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, neither second the motion. Any comments on this? Great, I think this is a good approach. Um, I'm interested to see what staff comes up with, so I will support it. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, uh, the original motion is amended, amended, uh, as suggested. Okay, so the next point, we had discussion on revising item three. Um, Shane, you had suggested striking, um, the one portion of it and, uh, Stephanie had a, a different idea. Uh, potentially this could be resolved by, it sounded like Stephanie was not in favor of, of, of the idea that, that Shane and I had expressed support for. I would be okay with striking the whole thing. I mean, I, it just, I, I, I feel like I, I understand maybe part of the rationale for having a sort of general statement in there that doesn't, that's super, uh, up to interpretation, but, uh, yeah, I would support an, a motion to strike item three. I'll, I'll just say that.
I support Vince. This doesn't, it belongs in a, a general plan state, but not in a, in a, uh, the code. Yeah.
Agreed, and thank you, Stephanie. I always love hearing about your front yard and the many animals that pass through, so thank you for that.
Stephanie, could you make the motion?
Okay, um, I'm, let's see, can I just say I motion to strike, um, bullet three from sec- division four, section A general standards? Or do I need to read more than that?
I think that's, that's totally right. If we could just maybe get the, uh, uh, Andrew, if you get the section correct, so four point six point, A point three. Great. So Andrew has a motion there. So is there a second to the motion?
This is Josh. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Josh. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Okay, I think we got everyone. All opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Okay, the last item that we've discussed here is, uh, it was brought up by Dave on sort of the, the development agreement and homeowners associations. Uh, are you thinking you'd like, was it, was it mostly questions, Dave? Or are you thinking you want to suggest an amendment here? Uh?
Uh, I don't have any, uh, specific language. I'd like staff who's way more familiar this than, than I am for sure to, to find, uh, proper language to recommend to the governing bodies and have them figure out, um, what's the responsibility on the private developments and what's the responsibility in the public realm? And sort that out. And we already have some other standards elsewhere in the city or have in the past about street trees and percentages landscaping. Those kinds of things are out there in other places, and I know we could pull it together for the governing body and, and have a be clear, uh, since we're talking, uh, code here, not just an idea, uh, about who's responsible for what and how. Without being, I can't be definitive, okay?
That sounds good to me, Dave. I, I mean, it sounds like an amendment to me. If staff would be, if that would, if that would be acceptable to staff, if you think you could run with that and you're seeing a thumbs up from Tom?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, Dave, you, uh, if you could make a motion along those lines, um, we could move this forward.
I will try. I recommend, uh, that the staff develop, uh, language to, for governing body use for responsibility on private and public landscape maintenance. Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, very good. Is there a second on Dave's motion?
I'll second that. Oh, good.
Okay, it is seconded by Stephanie.
I have a question. Sorry. Is it, is the, is the motion about standards and maintenance or is it just maintenance?
Oh, yeah, we talked about both. I recommend both standards and maintenance.
Thanks for that question, Shane. Yeah, that was my understanding too, that it was both standard, but standards and. I didn't catch that. Okay. Great, so as I mentioned, so all in favor of the motion made and amended, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Okay, so is there any, were there any other items on, on landscaping, uh, that we want to discuss? We could move on potentially to other things. We are, just to remind us, Andrew, could you bring up the original motion? We're back at the point where we have had this motion to approve an ordinance establishing the form-based code, uh, for the city council. Uh, that motion has been made and seconded. So that's the point where we're at right now.
So we need to, uh, go through the, um, three approvals, correct, um, that Andrew, uh, had on the screen a second ago?
Yeah, so the ones that we did for the county, uh, oh, right, this is a new one. Yeah, okay.
And we think that we can do this as, as one go?
Yeah, yeah.
So I move that, uh, we adopt the recommended changes to the code as outlined in memo dated ten twenty twenty and addition, and the addition in the presentation, uh, and that we also add utility scale renewable energy generation is permitted to use, uh, is a permitted use, uh, to T three, T two, T three and S D dash W. And we add to definitions, utility scale renewable energy generation includes solar, hydro power, uh, geothermal and wind, but does not include propane, natural gas or any carbon dioxide polluting source, maybe combined with agricultural uses.
Very nice. Thank you, Shane. Is there a second?
I'll second it. This is Peter.
Okay, Peter seconded. Okay, any comments on this or questions before we call a vote? Caroline, are you?
I was yawning, I'm sorry.
You're yawning. Sometimes you can't be sure if someone's trying to unmute themselves, um.
You can call the question.
So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Moving on. I don't think we're done yet.
Would it be possible to increase the size of this? Or is that something I should be able to control?
I mean, I can zoom in like that.
That helps me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Either, can you minimize, I, on my screen, I can minimize the area in my Zoom window that's dedicated to all of you and that maximizes the presentation? I don't know if you can do the same, but that might be helpful.
Kinda. Thank you.
Okay, so Andrew, do we have to make a similar motion to, uh, on the form-based code for the county?
Uh, well, we haven't finished, so what you, you've, what you've done is you've made a motion to approve the, the ordinance. You've made amendments to the ordinance. Now you have to go back to that orig- original um, and, and original motion and, and amend it. So this is the original motion, recommend the Missoula City Council approve an ordinance that establishes the Mullen Traditional Neighborhood Development Form-Based Codes. We need to add as amended, recommend the Missoula City Council approve an ordinance as amended.
Oh, right, okay, so we, we, yeah, right, so we've gone through all the amendments now.
Yeah.
Right, and so we're done with amendments.
I believe you are. I haven't.
Yeah, unless anyone wants to suggest further amendments, which is fine. But, um, okay, thank you for bringing us back here. So, right, so now we're back at the motion that's been made, the original motion and, and seconded, um. And, so do we remake the motion? Is that what you're saying, Andrew?
Or? It might be better to do that, that. Um, yeah, I, you, uh, you, you, you moved to amend the, the original motion, so um, I can't remember who made the original motion.
Yeah, that's, I mean, all the, all the subsequent motions have been to amend the original motion, so I, I think we can just call the question, right? Call the vote?
That's a good question. So all those motions were to amend, so do you need to go back and amend the original motion?
Uh, I don't think so.
No, I think you just add as amended.
Yeah, right, so it would be, we'll call the question on the motion as amended, uh, call a vote, uh, and when the minutes are written up, I think the original motion would be as amended. Okay, okay, great. So the motion that was made and seconded is on the screen and we've just made a number of amendments, so, uh, all in favor of the motion on the screen as amended, say aye.
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 All opposed? Great, the motion passed.
All right, so this one will be easy. Here, let me prepare it for you. All right. This would be, this is the mo- recommended motion for adoption of the code into the county. It's a little bit longer because I don't know, I'm not as good as being direct as Tom is with my motions, I guess.
Great, and so as amended, just to be clear, we're saying, accepting all the amendments that were previously approved in, in the last motion.
Yeah.
Great, would someone like to make this motion?
I'll make this one. Uh, that the proposed Mullen Traditional Neighborhood Development Form-Based Code be recommended as amended to the Board of County Commissioners for adoption as a zoning regulation for a portion of Missoula County to implement the Mullen Area Neighborhoods Master Plan based on the findings of fact and co- conclusions contained in the staff report.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, you're good. It's, I, I just have to smush my nose up against and I just have to smush my nose up against and to the screen. Everyone has to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Niva. Okay, is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Dave. Give a moment for last comments and then we will vote. So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion passed. Onto the next.
Next one. So this is the last motion. It's for the zoning map amendment. So the county is proactively rezoning, proposing to proactively rezone. The undeveloped portions of the plan area to the form-based code. And so I think what we can do with this one is there are recommended changes outlined in the memo. I think we could incorporate that into the motion. Because I don't think the planning board has any other changes to the zoning map, but you definitely might. I but I just don't I you guys didn't talk about it, so I don't think you do. So let me let me think about how to how to reword this real quick. All right. Let me I can bring it up big. Hold on.
Okay, all all at once, so recommending the zoning and the changes all in one one self loop.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay, great. Would someone like to make this motion?
I can do this one. I I move that the proposed zoning map amendment implementing the Mullen Area Neighborhoods Master Plan. As shown in exhibit five, be recommended to the Board of County Commissioners. For adoption with changes recommended by staff in the memo dated ten twenty twenty. Based on the findings of fact and conclusions contained in the staff report.
Thank you, Josh. Is there a second?
I'll second it. It's Peter.
Second. Yep, Peter seconds the motion. Okay, are there any questions on this one about what we're doing here or comments? Okay, this makes a lot of sense to me to to, you know, approve the zoning, then apply it. So all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Good job.
Congratulations. You guys covered it all.
Wow. Yeah.
Nice work, everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good work, planning board and staff. Great, great work.
Congratulations, everybody. Thank you.
Right.
I hope this.
Thank you, Tom and Laval and Andrew, Karen.
Yeah, thanks.
It was a long and, you know, very effective process, so thank you.
Thanks for your hard work.
Set the standard for the rest of. The peri-urban area around this.
That's right. Times are changing.
We Tom and I have from the beginning have talked about how we hope this is this this project has the opportunity to affect change throughout the community in positive manners.
Yeah.
Things that we're especially excited about are are. The road. Standards that are within this that are really progressive and include separate spaces for both pedestrians, bicyclists and. People in automobiles. We think that is necessarily we need to build roads like that everywhere in Missoula if we want to try to meet our mode shift goals and address climate change. Another thing that we're really excited about is mixing of uses and and mixing of housing types as as, you know, by right and. There's a lot in a lot in this plan and code to be excited about, I think. So we're we're really happy with how it's going.
And can I just add my favorite part is that we're actually planning ahead. So. Yeah, Dave.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep, that's a big deal, you know.
It's been a long time. You guys are doing great.
Yep.
Next step is city council and the commissioners?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, thank you. Um. December seventh, I at what P M, Tom, will that hearing be at?
I think they're still at seven.
Okay, so on December seventh, we will have a a joint city council county commissioner hearing that we are. The both bodies will be together at the same time to hear the public's thoughts on this plan and. Tom, you want to talk about what's happening tomorrow related to the plan?
Yeah, so we're we're going to introduce this a little more slowly and thanks to being able to give that long presentation to you all. Last month where we decided to make a couple changes. And especially a little more education as far as what is a form-based code and how do they work? And so that that we'll do the sort of code piece at a committee meeting tomorrow at eleven A M. And with Dover Coal giving that education. And so that the council and committee and staff and can listen in and start to take this in a little bit more slowly and so that. You know, you all got it all at once and. You know, it it just becoming more and more evident that we really need to be careful about educating and and letting people know how they can. Contribute and how this works and because it does involves every department in our city and so. We're going to try and be a little more careful of that. So that's what we're doing tomorrow with the code. At let from eleven to one at the Land Use and Planning Committee meeting, which you can find the link to on the agendas link on our city website.
Very nice, Tom. Niva.
Well, there's always room for improvement. But, you know, you guys really. This is setting a really good standard and I really appreciate the hard work that goes into it. I mean, gosh, so. You know. I I. I just want to thank you for that and, you know, wish you the best with the city council, but. This is the way we need to go. We have no choice, really.
I would add the city-county collaboration seemed, you know, really extraordinary. I mean. Yeah, it's probably something that it makes it more challenging, but certainly necessary here and, yeah. Welcome.
Yeah, yeah, it good point, Vincent, you know, that is, it makes it. Uh, you know, oftentimes cities are doing this kind of thing on their own and they're doing it in their own space and. Uh, it's tough to know how the county is taking that in and how it can relate to what they're doing. And in this case. You know, we're not doing it, you know, in an isolated space. We're. We're working with them all the way through and that's been much appreciated. Yes.
Great. Well, thank you. We look forward to seeing how it goes.
We'll keep you informed for sure. Yep.
Okay, thanks again.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. We're moving on to communications and special presentations, which there are none tonight unless, nope. Item eight, committee reports. Peter, was there a TPCC meeting?
There was. Um, yeah, there was this afternoon and the. Long-range transportation plan was presented to us. And but and in fact, last week, there were Deborah, Dawn, myself. And Aaron were as well as Jennifer from the consulting company went through a sort of a first run of it. Uh, to see what we thought about it. And basically what the consulting firm and Aaron have recommended is a long-range plan that comes as. Business as usual would be one of the options. Another would be called strategic, which would involve. Transportation issues within the city, more or less. And then the third one is called enhanced connections, which brings in, which is an option that. Extends to a more outreach in communities. And they wanted us to think about what, you know, which of the three we would rec we think makes most sense. The they all have their, I mean, they have their pros and cons. And the Aaron and Jennifer will be, I I hope I got that name right. Will be bringing it to the to us, to the planning board sometime in late November and early December. There's. They're working with the staff to schedule a time to come and present the same. Issues to us. Uh, so it's pretty much a question of how much, you know, with limited resources and limited grant money, what can we do? To think strategically about. Transportation growth. Everything from highways to alleys and bike lanes and bus routes. The one thing that I'll the during this conversation. Well, the. The commissioners, Dave Strohmeyer and Josh Slotnick asked, we're talking about the planning board. And we're hoping that we might be able to take a proactive role in coordinating with towns and communities in Missoula County. Starting with closer ones like Lowlow, Frenchtown, maybe East Missoula. To find out more about their their growth plans. Uh, and the context was this long-range transportation goals for Missoula County specifically. You know, are there plans that they have that would help us make a decision about strategic or enhanced connections? And Dave Strohmeyer suggested that we talk to, I forget whether what they're called. Community councils or town councils, but they're. They're they're government groups that talk to the commissioners. I think we need to, as a group, ask to have. The commissioners be more specific with us and what they would like. And I'm not, I probably that means that I I don't know how we want to do that. Maybe it means that Vince. Ask them what he what, you know, what or or begun to begin a dialogue with how we might do that. I'm that's where I'm stopping.
Peter, thanks for the the summary of that meeting and the analysis there. That was really helpful. Yeah, I we do have on the upcoming schedule, I think, as Karen mentioned earlier. Essentially, but yeah, we'll be hearing an update from Jennifer and Aaron at the MPO on the planning process. And we'll look forward to that. But, um, yeah, with with regards to the comments from the commissioners. I think that's probably what you suggested is probably the way to go. I mean, either communicating, I can communicate with the commissioners. Directly or through staff to kind of clarify what the request was in this meeting that you had.
Yeah. I think the the bigger, yeah, the bigger issue was. I would hate, I wouldn't say frustration with us, but maybe curious why we are so. Why we are not more proactive in the work that we do. And I made a comment that the sort I basically made a comment saying that. The staff is pretty, has a pretty full plate for us to consider at all our meetings. And so we really don't have an opportunity to be proactive, though we have talked about it in the past. That's pretty much all I said. But I would, I think we should begin a conversation with the commissioners about what they or at least have a, you know, once a year meeting. And have them explain, you know, talk to us about what they expect us to do for them beyond the obvious stuff that's written in our our bylaws.
Yeah, that's a that's a really interesting idea, Peter. I mean, I think and it's a point well taken, you know, if the commit we're here to advise the commissioners on topics of growth and planning. You know, from what we hear. And so if there's a need here for that, I think it should definitely be explored. As busy as our agendas are, the commissioners probably see everything that we do in times ten. So, you know, they have much less bandwidth than.
Right.
Even us to deal with this stuff, so.
Right. But certainly in the world of COVID where we still have Zoom meetings, you know, it becomes less onerous for them to participate in some of our meetings or, you know. A scheduled half hour in some future meeting. I guess that's sort of presumptuous of me, but.
No, it's a good idea. Yeah, I I will bring it up with staff first and see see the best way to approach the the topic. But thanks for bringing that up, Peter, and participating.
Thank you.
Uh, in the process. Okay. Moving on to the next item, old business. We do not have any old business. Uh, is there any new business that folks would like to bring up? Seeing none, I will move to comments from planning board members. Stephanie.
Um, yeah, Vince, you already know what I'm going to be sharing. I just, as of today, sent my resignation in from the planning board to the county commissioners. I have a new job. I'm moving to Bozeman. I will greatly miss serving with you all, but there's some kiddos here who are going to learn about food and farming and I'm going to be involved with it. I'm very excited about it. So I will. If all goes well with my new lease, I'll be moving here as of November first. So since I will no longer be a new Missoula County resident, I no longer have the opportunity to serve in Missoula County. And so I will wish you guys all the best in the important work that you're doing and remain a fan from afar, but I'll. I'll be at the next meeting on the twenty seventh and then that will be my last meeting from there on. So. Thank you guys all for everything and for all the conversation and for all the good work you do and. And and just as somebody who's this week splitting her time between Bozeman and Missoula, I have to say I'm really proud of the work that we're doing to be thoughtful and intentional in how we're developing our community and so. Yeah, good work, everybody. It's been fun serving with you for sure.
We'll miss you.
I'll miss you too.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bozeman has gained a a great new asset.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're great. Good. Happy for you.
Yeah, I'm excited for you, Stephanie. It sounds like a great opportunity, but it's bittersweet because it's been great to have you on the board and I always appreciate your perspective and. You've often helped me see things in a different way, which is, you know, really, which I really value. So thank you.
Thanks to you. Thanks to everybody for sure. It's it's I've learned so much from first been on this board, so I really appreciate it and I'll see you next week and have some comments, I'm sure.
Right. Okay, thanks, everyone, for tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great week.
Good job.
We're joined. Yeah. See you.
Good night.
Good job. Next week.